I call to order the regular session of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three at six thirty P. M. Roll call.
Everybody here?
Here.
Commissioner Lo- I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Lo.
Here.
Commissioner Eisner?
Here.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Here.
Commissioner Kuyanis?
Here.
Evening's invocation, we're gonna have two of them. The first is gonna be given by Reverend G. Thompson. And then the second one will be given by, a special invocation will be given by Commissioner Eisner. Please come forward, Chief. And then after the, if we can remain standing after the invocation and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Let us pray. Oh gracious God, our Father, we come to you in a time of great need. Oh God, we ask that you hereby touch Israel. We ask that you hereby touch even Gaza. We ask that you touch Ukraine. We even ask that you touch Russia. And more so, God, we ask that you touch the United States of America. Give us what we need to be the home of those that are free and have the liberty under you. We ask right now that you enter into this meeting by way of your spirit. Touch each and every person right now. We ask that you continue to bestow the wisdom, the strength, and everything that is needed upon our mayor, commissioners, chief of police, chief of fire. And for every leader in this great city, continue to help us to be the beacon of hope as we hereby come to serve our fellow men. We ask right now that everything that is said here and every word that is given is pleasing and acceptable unto you. We ask that you guide and direct us in every way. We pray this prayer in this love for you and for our fellow mankind. Amen.
Amen. Commissioner Eisner?
So I just wanted to say, this has been a very troubling week for me. I've watched some of the most horrible things in the world. And I'd like you to just listen to this prayer. This is a Jewish prayer for a difficult time, which is a difficult time, as was said, for Ukraine, for Israel, even for the Palestinians. Israel does not want to kill anybody, but it's, they were forced into this. So give ear to my prayer, heed my plea for mercy. In time of trouble, I call to you. You will answer me. When pain and fatigue are on my companions, when are my companions? Let there be room in my heart for strength. When days and nights are filled with darkness, let the light of courage find its place. And now, since I will not be able to get through it without being a bawling, let me just put this. I hope it works.
[speaking Hebrew].
[speaking Hebrew]. [speaking Hebrew]. [speaking Hebrew]. [speaking Hebrew]. [speaking Hebrew]. [speaking Hebrew]. [speaking Hebrew]. [speaking Hebrew]. [speaking Hebrew]. [speaking Hebrew]. [speaking Hebrew]. [speaking Hebrew]. [speaking Hebrew]. [speaking Hebrew]. [speaking Hebrew]. [speaking Hebrew]. [speaking Hebrew]. [speaking Hebrew]. [speaking Hebrew]. And that is the prayer for the dead. So I thank you all. I just wish that this comes to peace and that there's no further harm, but it'll be what it'll be. And I hope that we all learn a lesson from this. Life is more important than anything else we face. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
I have a couple of announcements before we get started. Item fourteen has been deferred. And that is the ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two, water and sewer rates. And that second reading was deferred to November seventh, two thousand twenty-three at the regular session. Also, we have with us this evening, Mr. Dan Lewis, who is the attorney sitting in for Ms. Regina Kardashian. So welcome, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, forgive my tardiness.
That's, that's fine. Now, we're gonna go to a special presentation by Advent Health, the president, Ryan Quarterbaum. Welcome, Mr. Quarterbaum.
Am I able to present right here? Is this okay? All right, very good. Was there a PowerPoint presented or given already? I guess it's running from here.
Let's see how we can help you out there a second. Mr. Jump, we may need your help down here.
It's actually fine. Looks like they don't have the PowerPoint, so that's okay. I can still, we can proceed on. So first off, thank you guys for allowing me some time to give an update on what's going on at the hospital. I think the last presentation that you all received was from me this time last year, when I had been in my seat probably all of two weeks or three weeks. So fairly new in the role where you all had more context of what was going on in the hospital than, than I did. So, but it's been a great year at the hospital. And I think even prior to that, the presentation was given from Jason Dunkle, who sends his wishes and wants to say how much he appreciated working with each and every one of you. So what I wanted to talk about is how the hospital provides services for not only everyone on the city commission, but for the entire community of Tarpon Springs. And the way I like to think of how we provide care is the care that we provide with the physicians and nurses that take care of patients, in the culture in which we provide this service, in the community that we serve. So I like to think of it in terms of care, culture, and community. And I'm just gonna touch on each one of these things briefly, so you guys have an idea and a sense for how we're doing as a hospital. So first, in terms of the care that we provide. Over the last twelve months, we have hired ten physicians to join Advent Health North Pinellas here in Tarpon Springs. And that's everything from primary care physicians, who I've received phone calls from some of you to get in and see, general surgeons who are here taking care of patients emergently if they need it, vascular surgery, which provide complex life-saving care when moments matter, cardiology and urology. So these are all services that we provide right here in Tarpon Springs and where people and citizens of our community don't need to drive in order to receive care. So the care we provide is really the reason why we're here. But it's more than that, because if you show up and you have a bad experience, that's also a negative for our hospital. So it's about the culture in which we provide our service, which means that every staff member who works at the hospital is excited to be there. We have hospitals with Advent Health in West Florida, as far north as Ocala and as far south as Sebring. And our hospital in Tarpon Springs, we take an engagement survey every year, and our team members voted us the most engaged workforce of any hospital in the West Florida division. What that means is that the people that come to work every day are excited to be there. It means that they wanna do the work that they're doing, and when they take care of you, they're excited to take care of you. And so to have that right here in Tarpon Springs is something I get very excited about, because it's more than just an acute care service. It's we do it with a smile, because we know that we're taking care of our friends and neighbors. So culture. Finally, the community in which we serve. And the presentation that I had showed a picture of what we did when we joined forces with the Citizens Alliance for Progress with Mayor Archie's organization, where we took care of over eight hundred students in the North Pinellas County area to give them screenings for their schooling and for them coming back to school. So if they needed a shot, if they needed a vaccine, if they needed something as far as follow-up care, we saw over eight hundred students that came to Tarpon Springs so we could care for. It was something I was really excited about, because we actually got three E. R. physicians on their day off to come in and take care of those eight hundred students. So it's something that we do, not only because we know it's our responsibility as the hospital to care for our community, but also care for those who are underprivileged and to need the services. So that is my update for not only the city commission, but for the citizens of Tarpon Springs. I'm excited to be here. I think we've got a lot of exciting things coming this next year. We're actually targeting four more physicians that we're gonna be recruiting in the next year, including a robotic urologist and several primary care physicians, because we know primary care, just bread and butter, being able to come in and see a doctor close to home is important for everyone. So that is my report, and I'll field any questions that you might have.
Okay, Mr. Quarterbaum, I was gonna ask you, where can residents go to find out more about the hospital and the services that you provide? I'm sure you've got a website or something, maybe a general telephone number that they can call? Is that something you could share with us this evening?
Absolutely. So first off, I will always point people to the Advent Health North Pinellas website, where we have a list of our specialties, a list of our services, and a list of physicians that if you need to get an appointment, you can go on and schedule. I'll also say that our main telephone number, and let me pull it up right here. If you call this number, if you call seven, hang on a second. I hit the wrong one. Actually, while I'm pulling up this phone number, I'll also say that if you have an app, if you have the Advent Health Care Connect app, if you download that on your phone, you can actually schedule appointments via your phone, where you don't even need to call into a phone number. So it makes it really seamless and easy for you to schedule appointments. We have touchless registration as well, so if people are compromised, they don't need to necessarily have an interaction with the person, but we do have that service available. I'll pull up the, it's Advent Health Care Connect. Yeah, see, you can download it right here and get on there. And it's great, because if you get your lab drawn, you can actually know sooner than even a nurse will come in and let you know your results. So it updates real time. And our phone number, if you need to get ahold of us anytime, it's seven two seven nine four two five thousand. That's our main telephone number. So again, easy to access and wanna make sure you can get care close to home. That's really why we're here. Thank you for asking that, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Quarterbaum. I'm gonna, first of all, it's always good to hear from you. The hospital's part of our community. It's very closely aligned with the city, and we appreciate the partnership that we have and the communication that we have as well. I'm gonna ask the commissioners whether they have any comments that they'd like to make, Commissioner Eisner, anything?
Thank you, Mayor. All I can say is I've had nothing but good results. I have trust and confidence in all the doctors. I've met pretty much all of them. Or, and it seems to be, you have the boat going in the right direction. And I'm just looking forward, in a way, I'm looking forward to getting good medical care, but I'm gonna stay away from it for a while. Just joking. But I get nothing but good comments from people that have used the facility, so I thank you. I know it's a lot of hard work and it's a lot of after-hours and discussion, so I thank you for all your hard work.
And it's comforting to know that we have it if you need it. But of course, you know, we don't want that unless you absolutely need it, so.
Don't want an umbrella when it's raining, but I need it also, yes, I got you.
Exactly, exactly.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Quarterbaum, for the presentation. You've hit the ground running ever since you've been here. You've done great with the hospital and just working with community engagement and talking about the various ways you help out members of our community. And I just, it is a blessing to have a hospital in your hometown and be that close for emergency purposes, as Mr. Quarterbaum knows, when I had a very emergency situation recently, so thank you.
Commissioner Kuyanis?
Hey, Ryan. Well, I'm all, I was very proud to have been on the hospital foundation board. And, you know, when you think about a community that is complete, you know, we have our own police department, fire department, our own college, our own hospital. I mean, this is all part of what makes Tarpon Springs so special. And you guys have really upgraded our hospital and couldn't be prouder of you and the hospital, so thanks.
And I'll say too, I appreciate you saying that. If there are things too that you guys see and observe, we wanna get better. So we know that that is a piece of that. We, you know, obviously appreciate our partnership with fire, with police. But if you see things too that wanna get better, just reach out to me, here to, here to help.
You know I will.
Okay. The public, are there any public comments concerning the hospital or for Mr. Quarterbaum? Anything?
Hey, Mr. Quarterbaum. Peter Lacks, five one four Ashland Avenue. One thing that I get in the mail is, I don't know if it's quarterly, but it's a booklet with all the different events for different physicians, either your feet or your heart. So I don't know if that's because I'm on some sort of list or if it goes out to everybody, but that's another way I've seen y'all reach out, so you may want to expand it to make sure it covers a broader range. Now, I heard some comments here. Feedback. It's nice to have it when you need it. So I will explain my story as to something that is a deficit. The city has long been committed, as it was mentioned, we have our fire, police, we have our hospital, because we wanna be a self-serving community, independent, our own little island in case of emergencies. Your ground stands on one of the highest points in Tarpon Springs, that little island. Yet, Irma, Idylia, I don't know if Ian, I don't remember, you closed. That is not our hospital on the island. So one, I would recommend to the city commission, when we have our charter, that there is some language added to the hospital section that they're required to stay open unless they get a mandatory closure specifically to you yourselves. And I'll explain a little story. Irma. Electricity went out, and I was taking care of my mom, so I brought her, had brought her to my house before, because I was more secured there, I was up on higher ground. Came through, electric was out, that was that weekend. But by Tuesday, she lived in Villa Plomosa right across. And we've been to Helen Ellis Advent many times before. So. It was that Tuesday afterwards, and things had been cleared up, but things were still closed. And I got my mom up out of bed, and I said, all right, you're, I got a notice, electricity was back at Villa. Come on, let's get going. We're gonna take you back to your house, air conditioning and all that stuff, because I didn't. She's in the bathroom, starting to sweat, weak, fatigued. I said, come on, let's go. My girlfriend came over, we get her in the kitchen. She starts throwing up, passes out. So who comes to rescue her? Actually, from Eastlake, and I understand the whole thing of how, who's available. So they got her stabilized, put her in the ambulance. I said, all right, well, we'll meet you up at the hospital. Oh, no, we're not going there, they're not open. We have to take you to Palms of Pasadena. If you don't know where Palms of Pasadena is, it's down by Passag grill in that area, it's low area. They take her down there. So Palms of Pasadena in a flood area was open, yet we weren't on an island. So if you really wanna serve the community, to be there when you need us, that's when we need you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed into talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, Mr. Quarterbaum, thank you very much. Would you like to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to come back to that comment, and I appreciate you sharing that, because definitely that is a concern. Happy to bring back some more information for the city. I do know that we had an order from the county to evacuate in the previous two instances that you referenced. I do know that we also evacuated in Irma, and that was late. And thank goodness, everyone was evacuated safely. And for us, patient safety is priority number one. But I'm happy to bring back to the county our plans for how we would address this in future events, because again, if patient safety is number one, we wanna make sure everyone's in a good standing. And if we're getting an order from the county, that's really where we're working with. And I know we are in correspondence with the city throughout this last hurricane to make sure that patient safety was number one, so appreciate you bringing that for feedback, though.
Thank you, Mr. Quarterbaum. You're welcome anytime.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, let's go to public comments. Are there any public comments?
Good evening, David Ballard Geddes, Jr. I live on Georgia Avenue in Palm Harbor. When in the course of human events, the Declaration of Independence states that mankind is more disposed to suffer. It declares to eat us out of our subsistence, declaring to harass us, to reduce us under absolute despotism, citing a long train of undistinguished destruction of all ages and conditions, both cruel and perfidious, scarcely paralleled in the most barbaric of ages. It declares to protect them by mock trial from punishment for any murders that they are to commit on the inhabitants of these states. A train of absolute destruction, declaring death to the voice of justice, declaring that they are free, free to levy warfare and to use the liberty and freedom of warfare to pursue happiness. The Declaration of Independence declares the world to be a candid world, presently that this government is an arbitrary government, light and transient, and that legislation is just pretending while claiming to be honorable and sacred in such train of death and destruction. Thomas Jefferson's Declaration of Independence continues to state that such savagery has the added right to change and abolish the forms of government to which they are accustomed and to provide new guards and new appropriations for their security and their safety. and to provide new guards and new appropriations for their security and their safety, altering their former system of government and in effect doubling down on a constitutional counterfeit operation hoping to benefit from a twice act of political deception. In their assumptions of power, such declaration must be withdrawn. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Geddes. Any other public comments?
Okay. Peter Lax, 514 Ashland Avenue. Some scripture, which will relate to some of what I will be speaking about. First, we're going to do Luke 12, 1 through 3. Meanwhile, when a crowd of many thousands had gathered so that they were trampling on one another, Jesus began to speak first to his disciples, saying, "Be on your guard against the yeast of the Pharisees, which is hypocrisy." There is nothing concealed that will not be disclosed or hidden that will not be made known. What you have said in the dark will be heard in the daylight. And what you have whispered in the ear in the inner rooms will be proclaimed from the housetops." That will relate to something later. And the next one, Matthew 23, 23, 28. Woe to you teachers of the law and Pharisees, you hypocrites! You give a tenth of your spices, mint, dill and cumin, but you have neglected the more important matters of the law, justice, mercy and faithfulness. You should have practiced the latter without neglecting the former, you blind guides. You strain out a gnat, but swallow a camel. Strain out a gnat, swallow a camel. Now, for those of you who may not be aware of my references, you can go to last meeting, October 3rd. And around four hours and 11 minutes or so in, there will be a discussion about tree mitigation and traffic impact fees, of which it was very easily given away. You got, let a developer get off a tree removal fee at $89,960. Where the county team staff had said somewhere between 122 and 28, and I showed you how, 128. So if you look at around 125 and they got 90, that's $35,000 short that you could have had from a developer. Then, the $247,000 in impact fees. So you add that together, that's around $285,000, roughly $300,000. Y'all didn't have any problem passing it through if you go to timestamp 439. Commissioner Kuyas said, let's just push it through. I agree with staff, push it through. Shortly thereafter, Commissioner Eisner agreed. And then surprisingly, at the end of the meeting, I see Commissioner Eisner waving and winking at Mr. Stamason, giving him a thumbs up as he leaves. You won't see that on the tape because they're focusing on the next agenda item where the camera's focused on the mayor. Yet, the gnat, you argued with the police chief about a fire vehicle that could be used. $250,000, boom, there you go. You gave it away to a developer, but argued about the gnat? But you swallowed the camel. Same thing with you, Commissioner Kuyas. Habitat for Humanity came up. You wanted more money, them to give more money for those lots. Yeah, they might have been worth more. But you voted against it, yet for the developers, 247,000 plus 35, almost 300,000. There's your difference. I only speak what I see, I'm not judging. Y'all make your own judgments.
Mr. Delakis. Mr. Delakis, I just wanted to apologize to you. I was distracted a bit, so you may hear my voice while you're doing your reading. Alright, thank you. Are there any other public comments? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access public comments?
If anyone online would like to make a public comment, please, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed into talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you. Ms. Jacobs, you have one or two?
Yes, we have one. And this even, this has to do with water and sewer, even though it's been deferred. We are gonna go ahead and read it. It is from Gabriella Barberico, 1716 Sunkist Drive. Please try to keep the increase as minimal as possible to our rates. Also, please do not add fluoride and remove the same from our water supply. This should be the choice of the residents and not to spend extra dollars for additional filterations of our water in Tarpon Springs. Thank you.
Is that it then?
That's all, yeah.
We're gonna go to the consent agenda. And I'm gonna ask any commissioners if they've got any questions on any item to go ahead and request that it be pulled. I'm gonna pull number four because I think we need to make a decision on that beyond just approving the agenda items. So are there any others besides item four? Okay, I'm gonna ask a motion to approve the consent agenda for items 1, 2, 3, 5 and 6. I'm gonna read those. Number one is the attorney's fees, A for Carlton Fields invoice, B for person Cohen Mooney Fernandez and Jackson. Number two, authorized execution of FDOT agreements for U.S. alternate 19 utility work. Number three, authorized execution of FDLE standard grant agreement for defibrillators. Number five, increased file number 230010 and award file number 240015, purchase of beverages for resale at the golf course. And item number six, increased file number 23059, single source purchase of mental health resources for first responders. May I have a motion in a second to approve those items? Commissioner Eisner, are you made a motions or a second?
Second.
Okay. There's public comments, are there any public comments on any of these items? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments on the special, I'm sorry, on the consent agenda items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 and 6, not number four?
If anyone online would like to make a comment on these items, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed into talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes. Item four is the award file number 230194 for the 4th of July fireworks display. And I read this and I want to make sure I understand the, we've got an option A and B in there. And I think the amount of what you're requesting is for the 30-minute display, right? So do we have to make a distinction between A and B or just go with a motion to approve?
I would say just go with a motion unless you want to go to the, unless you want to go to the lesser one.
Oh, no.
I recommended the 30-minute, it's only 4,000.
Let's include that in the, in the motion for item four to award the July 4th fireworks display contract for three years. And for the three years to make that option B, which would be the 30-minute displays. Are there any questions concerning that from the commission?
And it is guaranteed for July 4th.
That's right. That's important. Public comments, are there any public comments? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to make a comment on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed into talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, may I have a motion to that effect in a second, please? So move.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Jacobs, you got the motion that would be for approving the contract for three years with a 30-minute display on the 4th of July. Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes. We're gonna move on to the special consent agenda number seven, approved St. Petersburg College Greece study abroad scholarship. And we have with us Mr. Rodrigo David, Dr. Rodrigo Davis, a provost for St. Petersburg College, who, is that correct?
Yes, and Mr. Basil Muzatsis from the college. Have a short presentation to give you before we get to the item.
And Professor Basil Muzatsis, who is gonna be heading up this program.
Thank you very much for having us here. So we can go through and just detail out a little bit of what this program has to offer. If you permit me a moment. First, before we get started, I just would really like to thank you all for having us here, for having us in front of the city as well, City of Tarpon leadership. I'd also like to thank Dr. Rodrigo Davis, also helping to broker these relationships between not only the city of Tarpon Springs, also the sister city associations as well. This trip was kind of born out of a project to gather as much goodwill as we could around not just the city of Tarpon, but the St. Petersburg College and also bringing in these associations that were kind of lost during COVID. Things, we didn't get across to go to Greece. We didn't see our ancestors, as it were. So out of that beginning, ended up putting together a trip for May 2024. We're just a couple of years out. And one thing in particular is students at our level, they may not have gone to Greece at all. So this trip has to actually balance out not only the introduction, but also a little bit more into the inner politics of who we are as a community and also who the community is in Greece. So the itinerary we have is actually almost a two-week setup. And we traveled to Athens at first and to Delphi, which is essentially this ancient center of the world for Greek culture and for really the West at the time. From there, one island stop we made was in Aeina, because in the beginning of all of this, there was some discussion as to whether or not there would be a sister city, a new sister city association with the island of Aeina happening. And that may or may not still be a possibility. But we are still planning to go. And if we don't go there, if it doesn't happen, then we will still go and meet with anyone we can. From there, we will travel to Kos and then off to Galimnos. And between Galimnos, and we'll try to fit in the island of Halke with us as well. It's part of the plan in the lower southeast portion of the Aegean. These islands were some of the original sister city arrangements. And we kind of owe to that a little bit. So we're gonna go over there, I'm gonna meet with some leadership from there, take our students with us and actually have a good interchange of culture, a good interchange of ideas, a good interchange of showing us, you know, you belong to us. We belong to you. We end up finally the island of Rhodes, where we can take a day trip up to Simi and the last sister city on this trip. Now, while there are other sister cities and I don't want to demean those, we couldn't have time to do all of them. If this trip is successful, you know, in a few years, couple of years, maybe we do a different one to hit the rest of the sister cities. But for now, we do, we start with this one, this setup. There's only so much we can do. For the focus of this trip, and really the focus for Greece in general, it really built on the ancient foundations of Western civilization. And in this case, it's not just figurative, it's literal. We are born on, of those foundations. They remain, they're still around these foundations. And from those foundations, the Romans added to them, medieval period added to them. You know, we have classes at our college that are going to cover those topics. So it's perfect for us and our, what we're gonna do. But from that, between the ancient Greek life to modern Greek life, from the city, the modern European city of Athens and even Rhodes to the island life, it covers all of it. And also, of course, the sister city relationships. The bottom of this, I have all the program details and this is available to anyone. If you need, I'll send this out to you. That's all the details of what we're gonna do on it. For the students, they're not only gonna experience firsthand culture in Greece, but part of the plan also is having them, I'm gonna do like a study abroad in Tarpon, really. We're gonna go around, I'm gonna lead them around into the docks area, into the old Greek village, St. Michael's, show the students what the city of Tarpon has to offer as far as this kind of idea. Before we go, this will be comparative. When they get over there, we, how is it different? And how is it not different? How is it is the same? I mean, the city of Tarpon has been held as the closest thing to Greece in the entire United States. Easy to show it when we take these students around. Because of that, we'll also take these students, when we go to Greece, they end up becoming these student ambassadors for not only the St. Petersburg College, but also the city of Tarpon Springs. So that's one of the goals in my interviews with these students and prepping them for all of this. Now, one of the challenges has been, of course, with cost, and that's what, the end of this all, it's been about $6,500 per student. And every student I've actually interviewed so far seemed to be on board with it. But any help, obviously, in these, in these times, we're gonna be appreciated by students who are on limited budget and their, and their lives. I do want to thank the city of Tarpon Springs particularly for this proposal for scholarships. There's five $3,000 scholarships for qualifying students who are their city of Tarpon Springs residents or Tarpon Springs high graduates. And we'll continue to promote this off for the next couple of months to get as much involvement as we can. To let you know as well, and I know it's part of the proposal, but I want to reiterate, St. Petersburg College also is offering up about $7,500 in additional scholarship funds on top of all this to help promote this program as their commitment to not only the college, but also our students, but also the community. Because we feel this is important for all three aspects. So, I thank you very much. Field, any questions you may have?
I was gonna ask you, the size of the trip, how many students do you intend to have?
10 is the minimum. And so anything above 10 is gonna be, we're gonna go. At 20, we're gonna bring in a second faculty member along board. At present, I have six approved, five committed. I just interviewed another student today. And I will add, and since I have the forum with this, actually, none of them are city of Tarpon residents nor city of Tarpon, or sorry, Tarpon Springs high graduates. So, and we're gonna promote a little further with that too. But we have a lot of possibility with this.
10 to 20 then?
Yeah, 20 and even, we, past 20, it'll be a little bit challenging with the ferries and things like that, but I still think it's doable.
Okay.
So.
Thank you, Professor Muzatsis. Dr. Davis, would you like to say anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick comment. I wanted to personally thank Professor Muzatsis for doing this. This is in addition to what he does at the college. So he's gonna be taking, promoting and doing a lot for these students to go to Greece. And it's just a great opportunity for the students, for the college, for the city, for the sister cities. And hopefully, we can get the chamber involved in it as well. So we're just pretty, pretty excited about the opportunity. And I know it's a lot of work. He's taken on a lot, but he's doing very well in representing St. Pete College and the city very well. So thank you.
Thank you.
I've got the chamber as well, sorry about that. Any other questions?
City manager, of course, could you kind of give us a rundown of the $15,000 and where that money's gonna come from?
Yeah, yes. This came when Mr. Davis approached myself and the mayor towards the end of the budget process. What we did was we had Ron Herring in our non-departmental. We usually put aside 10,000 or so for things that come up during the year. So Ron Herring in the non-departmental, to reserve 10,000 off. And also, we have close to 15,000, just under 14,900 or something that we're gonna be rolling over from the sister cities fund. So my recommendation to meet the request for the 15,000 is the 10,000 we have dedicated in non-departmental, 5,000 from the sister city, which will still leave 10,000 for the year. And that's my recommend, that's my recommendation that it's there in the budget. the year, and that's my recommendation that it's there in the budget to fund for this project.
Okay, thank you. Let me go to public comments on this item. Are there any public comments or questions? Mr. Jumper, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to comment on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, let me go to each of the commissioners, Vice Mayor Lund. Do you have anything, Commissioner Eisner, Commissioner Kulyas?
Yeah, I just want to thank Mr. Davis and Mr. Moutzatsis for this trip. I know it's been a long time coming and getting this program going, and Mr. Moutzatsis, I can't think of a better individual to lead the study abroad to Greece, not only with your growing up in Tarpin Springs, but being a leader for those on the excursion.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Thank you, Basil. Is the $6,500 estimate, does that include airfare and accommodations?
The accommodations, yes. The airfare is kind of an estimation at this point, and this is something, since I've gotten where I'm at actually today, I'm going to go through now, we're going to find the exact airfare we can, because some things in the costs are still approximate with the ferries and things.
Right.
The airfare, we tried to wait, because the prices were, they went sky-high, you know, for a little while, so we tried to wait to get the best price we can a little bit, and now is the time to really hit that hard. So, right now, I mean, it's going to be about that, and maybe at most, maybe $7,000, but that's, we don't foresee anything higher than that, that's why we actually overestimated that.
Thank you.
Yes.
First of all, I know you've been working on this for a very long time, and will there be anything with the University of Aegean over there, would there be any action with that?
I've reached out, and with the University of the Aegean, I know we had an association with the University of the Aegean, but pre-COVID. And reached out, and still going to be reaching out again, they're, they had a program, they had a summer program. And we're going to work with them and try to promote their program, and we're not doing ours, and then off thing, don't want to interfere with what they're doing, because it just feels competitive. They're a very interesting program with that one, but I do want to reach out when we get there, and even, they mentioned about getting a tour of the university and making some arrangements there in Rhodes, and we'll have the time. So, that's going to be the biggest involvement I think we're going to have with this journey, but at least foster the next phase of things. And I know, I think we got some outreach from the University of Thessaloniki as well, a similar kind of program that they have, too, and so is the college, when our trip is now, it's going, promoting their trips as well, their programs, because when they do their summertime, they close down. So, these are programs to keep their universities having some income as well. So, if we don't have ours, maybe we can send some of our students that way as well. This is going to be for the future.
I know that you're working with the sister cities organization here in Tarpin Springs as well, I know Dr. Davis attends the meetings regularly.
Yes.
So, I, and, you know, I've been asked my opinion, and I've always, rather than just having our sister cities a name only, I think we should be investing and also having some kind of activities with them, which is, this is what this is. And I'm very happy to see that, me personally, not just the mayor, but also as a personal look at it from the standpoint of a resident. So, I think that's a good thing, and it does contribute not only to what we learn and the students, what they learn over in Greece, but also what the Greek citizens learn from us on these trips as well. So, I want to thank you both, and you're welcome back as well, anytime to give us an update on how things are going, and maybe when the prices are a little more set, and also, we're still working with Egena to try and pin them down as far as the partnership with the sister cities, and I'll let you know more about that.
Thank you.
So, if there's no other questions or comments from the commission, do you have another one?
No, no.
No, okay. I want to thank you for this, and I want to ask for a motion and a second to approve the $15,000 for scholarships.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, if there's no further commission comments, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lund?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes. Item number eight, thank you, Professor Moutzatsis.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, please.
Can, is there a place on the website to, for people to donate to the scholarship fund?
That would be with the SBC Foundation in particular. That may be more of a...
There isn't, but we can make it happen.
All right.
Thank you very much. We'll do our best to make you all proud.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, let's go to item eight, approved application for state funding for new COPS and kids youth center building. City manager, of course.
Yes, Mr. Robertson's bringing his team up. Again, the mayor and I and staff met with our two representatives, Anderson and Hooper, to find out what we needed to do as a city to go forward, to get a state grant, and we found that information out, and Mr. Robertson, your team, could you present our presentation of what we need to do and get the permission of the commission to apply for the funding from the state for the new COPS and kids youth center building?
Yes, sir, thank you. I'm Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director, and we're excited about this one. For this item, as Mark said, we're requesting the board's approval to proceed with applying for state funding for the expansion of the COPS and kids program by building an additional building. In making this request, our team wanted to take the opportunity to introduce the project to you briefly and to the public in a brief presentation tonight. We'll also tell you about a couple of the building site location options that we presented in a recent public meeting. And to wrap things up, I'll tell you about the project timeline and the funding plan. So, I'm here tonight with Robin Redd, Executive Director from Tarpin Springs Housing Authority, she's back there, she's going to describe the COPS and kids program to you. Ram Venkat is our lead architect from Suites Parkman Architects, who's going to give you a summary of the two best site options. Chief Jeff Young and Grant Specialist PJ Harbor are also here to help us answer some questions at the end, and I wanted to recognize COPS and Kids staff, Jamalek Cruz and Brian Farley are here in the audience as well. So, I'm going to start with Robin, she's going to tell you about COPS and Kids.
Good evening, council, and good evening to the residents of Tarpin Springs. I serve Tarpin Springs through the Tarpin Springs Housing Authority. My name is Robin Redd, and I serve as the Executive Director of the nonprofit that works with the housing authority, and of course, we also have the COPS and Kids Youth Center together. The COPS and Kids Youth Center was established 30 years ago out of a small apartment in Mango Circle, which was a very, very old public housing community, and I'm so proud of our housing authority and our community that we've been able to redevelop that community with Eagle Ridge Apartments. So, COPS and Kids moved over to East Harrison Street through the partnership of the Police Department and the Housing Authority. We were able to establish what we have called traditionally as a campus, because we have multiple buildings. One building is owned by the city, and another building is owned by the Housing Authority. And within those two buildings and the square footage that we have, we're able to serve 75 youth. So, COPS and Kids Youth Center is a licensed childcare center. It serves 75 children every day, all year long. I like to point out that the center is only closed 10 days a year, and I want you to pause and think about that. It is so important to understand that the staff, we have nine staff at the youth center, including an officer, I have Officer Caniones is here tonight, he's one of the officers that worked at the youth center for many, many, many years. I have Jamalek Cruz, she's the program director, and Ryan Farley, who's the assistant director. And the nine staff, including the officer making 10, take care of the children at COPS and Kids every day, all year long. We always have a waitlist, and why do we have a waitlist? Because the students are happy and they're thriving. And we also have a waitlist because more parents want their students to be involved in such a great program. They are mentored by officers, they get homework help, tutoring, enrichment programs, they go on field trips, all kinds of exciting things that they get to do in the after-school and summer camp program all year long. I'm so grateful for the amazing partnership that we have with the Police Department for the support of the city, and I'm also especially grateful to our two primary funders, and that is the Juvenile Welfare Board and also the Department of Juvenile Justice. This is to empower the agencies and the staff to serve the kids very, very well every day, but we need more, we need more space, and we also want to provide more services. The only way we can do that is to have more space. And so, I'm so excited, not only that the kids and the families are going to have more space to have this empowering enrichment program, but the community, the city block that's targeted for this new opportunity is going to be lifted. It's revitalization, it is an incredible new asset, and it's going to bring a whole bunch of life and energy to the Union Academy area. So, I think the, I think it's really important to understand that we're going to be serving double the amount of kids, about 150 youth. We're going to have more teachers, we're going to have so many more opportunities for kids to be served and be taken care of every single day, but also, the whole neighborhood, they're going to have this community server that's serving their children and their grandchildren, and it's going to create more opportunities for us to engage with them, invite them in, have all kinds of activities for more parent engagement, more family engagement, and really bringing more life and energy to the whole neighborhood. I'd like to pass the baton over to our team, so we can talk about the details of the different sites that we're looking at to serve these kids, great.
Thank you, Ms. Redd.
Thanks, Robin. So, space is the name of the game here, and what's the purpose of this project? Well, the project plan is simple, double the square footage, so we can double the number of students that are served. After doing a condition assessment of the existing buildings, we determined that with some renovations, the existing buildings still have some useful life. So, our plan is to build a new building as a first phase, and then renovate the existing buildings as a second phase to come later. When the mayor, city manager, Chief Young, and PJ and I met with State Representative Anderson Hooper and State Senator, sorry, I got it backwards, Representative Anderson and State Senator Hooper, they recommended this phased approach to us for state grant funding. I'll dive into more details on the funding approach in a moment, but for now, I'm going to turn it over to Ram, he's going to share some information about the two best site options.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Ram Venkat, I am a...
Pull this in a little closer if you can, and speak a little louder.
Okay. Again, my name is Ram Venkat, thank you very much for having us here today. The project that I'm going to talk about, COPS and Kids, the two sites that we're looking at here, one of them is in the current tennis court area, which is directly across the street from the current location for, is there a pointer? Oh, perfect. This is the location of the current COPS and Kids facility, and the site that we're looking at is directly across the street on Harrison Street. The site here is currently occupied with tennis courts. In order to put a new building about 6,000 square feet in this location, this proposal is calling for the tennis court to be relocated to a currently unoccupied area in the center of Dorset Park. The entry to this building will be off of Harrison Street with a small drop-off, a covered drop-off, and shared parking with the current youth center, which is across the parking lot at 560 Harrison. The big advantage in developing this particular site is the close proximity between 555, 560, and the new building, because the buildings and the operations really work closely together, the staff really has the advantage of keeping a close eye on the parking lot and close eye on the people coming in and out while serving the kids. So, keeping their staff lean and efficient is one of the things that this site offers. The other advantage of this is developing a portion of Dorset Park by relocating the tennis court and using a portion of that unoccupied site for stormwater management. What this does is, it sets up the whole park for a level of development, level of revitalization that sets the stage for future growth and future development towards the southwest corner of the site. So, this is, again, partially tied to a longer vision for COPS and Kids, not just growing in this moment in time, but also over the years, for allowing for this particular area to serve the community, not just with the athletic facilities, but also with COPS and Kids as a youth center. This slide just kind of goes over some of the pros and cons between the slides, some of these I've already talked about. In a lot of cases, these ones emphasizes the fact that the new building is close to the existing two buildings, really making that a very strong asset to the growth of COPS and Kids. Site two took a slightly different attitude, rather than looking at the current tennis court as a redevelopment site, it tried to emphasize and revitalize the area that is currently undeveloped in Dorset Park. So, in this case, the building is located more in the center of the block with the main entry off of Levis, with a drop-off area that is slightly larger than what you had seen initially in site one, because there is more space here for a proper drop-off, a covered area, a loading dock for services to come in and out of the building. The stormwater management is still in the same location, but the slightly different twist in this design is that the new building is set about 400 feet away from the current facility, but really setting the stage for a good connection between the existing facility and the new facility, with a more landscaped, pedestrian-friendly, kit-friendly area, so that there's more breathing room between the new facility and the existing building. Some of the drawbacks that have been pointed out about this particular option is that the parking lot on this side of the building is somewhat removed from the operations happening closer to 555 and 560. But you could also look at the flip side of the coin with that. In this option, the parking lot is really separated, meaning from pedestrian flow. In comparison to site one, because of the tight nature of the site, all of the pedestrian and the kid and all of the drop-offs, all of them happen in one tight area, because the site is somewhat constrained. In site two, because we've moved it away and further into a space that has more breathing room, you now have the ability to separate pedestrian activity from vacular activities. Both options are functional, both options meet the programmatic requirements, and both of them will serve really well for the growth of COPS and Kids. This slide really goes over some of the pros and cons that I've talked about.
Thank you, Ram. So, to wrap this up, I'm going to talk about the funding approach and the timeline. We're seeking a 50% funding grant from the state. A state funding cycle takes about a year, so what we want to do is, we want to start now, submit our applications by the end of this month, and then we'll find out, initially, our first indication of when we might get the funding would be in the spring. The final determination is in July, when the new fiscal year starts for the state of Florida. At that time, we would know if we got the construction funding. We have our match ready in the form of penny funds for fiscal 2025, so we can begin the construction process in October of next year. That's, of course, assuming we get the state funding. At the same time, October next year is when we would prepare the application materials for the second phase of grant funding, the half of the renovations, the $800,000 half. And again, we do have the other half, the $800,000 match set aside for that fiscal year as well. So, the state match is all set up and ready to go, sorry, the city match is all set up and ready to go, assuming we get the state funding. And I won't go through all the details of that, it's a long slide, and I know you've got to get to your 730 items, mayor, so I'm happy to answer any questions you want.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Let me, just a couple of points of clarification, the existing buildings are not going to go away, we're going to continue utilizing those while the new building is built, and even after the new building is built, the old buildings will be renovated, so that's the idea between the approach that you're taking.
That's correct.
Then, I also had a question for the city manager, I'm going to allow him to give clarification on that.
The question was for the grant purposes. Obviously, we got some strong community input, you know my input. Is there a necessity tonight to decide on the site, whether it's one or two to proceed with the grant, or is that something, if the commission wants time to think and talk about it, that's something to be done later? Am I correct on the bringing forward the grant?
You are correct, it can wait. The amount, the numbers between the two sites are pretty close. Site one is a little more expensive, because we have to relocate a tennis court, that's the number I put in for the request, so if the commission decided to change its mind and go with site two or site one over the one that we're putting into the grant, there's no problem with going down to the lower cost item. So, there's no issue with that.
Do we have to provide graphics for, as part of the grant application, or no?
I like to provide them, just so they're helpful.
So, we're going to provide the two options on A or B?
No, I'm just going to provide general... No, I'm just going to provide general graphics about what the program is and what our intent is.
Do you want to talk to the community input that we got about the sites?
Thank you, yes. We had a public meeting last week, and it was well-attended. The feedback we got on the two sites was 10 to 1 in favor of Site One. I think the general feedback was they liked that, excuse me, that they had a campus feel and the, and the facilities were close to each other. There's some really good points about older children being there to pick up the younger children in the other buildings, when they have to pick up a sibling or a cousin and walk home and things like that. So that was, it was really well-attended, great questions. Everyone you see here was, was at the meeting that night, and I give Chief Young all the credit for organizing that and answering all the hard questions.
Okay, let me go to public comments. Are there any public comments on this item?
Good evening. Katie Taylor, 1991, Douglas Lane, Tarpon Springs. I was at that meeting, and I'm weighing on the side of number one, because of staff. Staff stress the point of safety for the children and the sightline from where those kids would be at. On one versus two, one was more safer. So, I don't work there. I'm going along with, I feel like staff should be heard, and their opinions should be considered. And they were for number one, because of safety. That's the main thing for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on this item? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
Anyone online would like to comment on this item? Please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do have a raised hand. I'll allow the first person in. If you can unmute, can you give an address for the record?
Juliana Day, 413 East Oakwood Street. I attended two meetings about this improved project for the Union Academy area. I feel that Site Two, even given the, building some breathing room, and also giving the building an opportunity to add more to the site also. So I think it's a good project, and I hope the commissioners, you all, agree also. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Day. Anyone else?
And we do not have any other raised hands at this time.
Okay. Ms. Jacobs, nothing?
I think...
So the motion that we need to, tonight, is just to authorize moving ahead with the grant application? And may I have a motion to that effect in a second? So moved. Are there any commission comments? I haven't asked you for comments yet. Vice Mayor Lunt?
I'm just pleased to see this got to this stage. I know there's a certain amount of urgency in getting this application in front of the state, so I'm glad we're proceeding. Thank you.
Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, Mayor. Robyn, you said earlier that you had a waiting list. How many people are on the waiting list? Because I know you also said this will handle 150. Will that handle that?
Oh, absolutely. It will handle it, and I think, by, by being in a housing authority, I, I know the process and the protocol of a waitlist quite well. And I think what happens is, over the years, families just don't even bother getting on the waitlist.
Yeah.
Because they know that once a student starts, whether they start in first grade or second grade, they don't leave, unless the whole family unit moves to another county, unless they, they move out. The students stay at Cops and Kids year after year after year. They start to dwindle off in high school, because they get really busy, and we love that problem, that they're involved in programs and stuff. But yeah, the, the waitlist, you know, it could be 100 long, if we allowed it to. But again, being in the housing business, you limit how many are on the waitlist. But we want to make sure that we're, I also think it's really important to serve more of our diverse population of students within the city. And so, we're going to be multiplying everything. We're going to be doubling our staff size. We're going to be doubling our transportation. We're going to have a clinic. We're going to have a teacher workroom, so that teacher can make their curriculum and all their materials for classes. There's going to be a conference room for, for meetings and spaces for training for staff. It's going to serve the whole community. I would love it to be a sister organization working with St. Pete College, so that we can be a more direct feeder to St. Pete College. So I'd like to be able to host some classes there. It's going to be an amazing asset for the neighborhood, and it's going to serve more students, keep them busy, off of their phones, entertained with other things in the neighborhood, and keep them busy and with a full, rich life every day, not just waiting for the fun on the weekends.
So, is there, has there been any determination of what each building will service?
So the breakdown, so right now, we've looked at the square footage, and we've looked at budget. So we basically just looked at the shell. But within the shell of the building, we're going to design out the appropriate floor plan, for example, double-layer front entry, buzzing in for hallways, so that the public cannot go into the hallways where all the student classrooms are going to be. Each classroom is going to have a separate age group, which is very important. Sometimes, we have a cohort of students that are, you know, 50 elementary, 50, you know, elementaries between first and third grade. That can happen. Or we can have that same amount for high schoolers. It just depends on how the cohort is aging and going through. But I think that having a youth group in a classroom that is that same age, it's kind of like in school, you do not want a third grader mixed in with a fifth-grade class. It's just, it's not healthy. They need to grow within their own space when they're ready. And so all the classrooms are going to have separate-age students, and, and all kinds of programming is going to be, is going to take place around that. We're going to have a meeting space, we're going to have a conference room, we're going to have a training space, a state-of-the-art commercial kitchen, so that we can have more family engagement, community engagement events. We're going to keep the indoor basketball court at the 555 East Harrison Street, because we, we did look at the, some ideas of using the square footage within the new building, but why would we do that if we can have more classrooms? Education, education, education. That is exactly what I said on a Zoom call with the Juvenile Welfare Board today, begging for a part-time position to become a full-time position. It is so important that we impress upon these children their excitement and the value of education for the rest of their lives, and we need to do that in separate classrooms that have state-of-the-art technology, that can communicate with other students across the country, across other countries, and, and have their experiences there in the after-school program led by professionals. Bring in subject matter experts, just like we do now, but have even more subject matter experts come in and lead workshops and trainings for the student. And, and with this space, like I said, we're going to be serving the whole family more. So I really hope, down the road, that we are able to customize a curriculum that we have throughout the year for the parents to participate in their own continuing education. So connecting them with resources for job readiness, workforce development, pursuing their education, getting enrolled in at least one class at St. Pete College, which turns into them being jazzed and excited and proud, because they finished the class, and then they end up, you know, wanting to get a degree or a certificate from St. Pete College. I mean, sky's the limit, right? We want to create a synergy of highly professional personnel taking care of these kids, have a great flow of operations, and have the kids excited to come there every day, learning, being with their friends, and, one-on-one, being with their mentors. It is nothing, there's nothing like a student, and I'll tell you, I've got two middle schoolers myself. There is nothing like the power of a teacher, the, the power of a mentor. Students remember the way their teacher or their mentor looked at them in the eyes, how they made them feel, not so much what they were teaching about the carrots in the garden and this and that, that they do, and they have a wonderful time at Cops and Kids, but how did the staff person that they were spending time with, how did they make them feel? And did they notice when they were having a bad day? So we're going to have a better, we, we have a phenomenal ratio, I will say, and please keep this a secret, because the Juvenile Welfare Board has continued to support us with a ratio of one to eight students, and that is phenomenal. And that's, Boys and Girls Clubs and YMCA's and other large programs are not able to do that. It's more of a 25 to one. And so we want to keep that very small ratio of connection between the professional adult that is working with the students and the number of students per, per adult.
The only thing I'd like to add is you should work on a little bit of your enthusiasm.
I can't, and I'm being very reserved. You all know me. I'm being very reserved, so, anyway, thank you.
I just want to thank you. You are a ball of fire.
We have so much fun. We have, and I, and I, I cannot say enough about the staff. So the Housing Authority employs nine personnel for the Cops and Kids Youth Center, and then we have one amazing officer. And before, it was Officer, Officer Quinones, and now it's Officer Byrd. And we are so grateful for this family, this team. And then we've got the other family members, like, you know, Sergeant Tureen, that come in. So it is, it is with the team that we are able to keep these kids coming. Build it, and they will come. That's, that's what they do.
Just thank you, thank you, your staff. Thank you, thank you. You guys have been doing a great job, and all we can do to support you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And you should be proud and grateful that it is within the, the hands of this team here. I've had such a great experience working with these architects and engineers. As Ryan said, they just, they're so brilliant, the way they see things, and it's been a real blessing to, to have this interaction, this conversation, and trying to make this an amazing asset for the neighborhood.
Thank you. Commissioner Kulias?
Yeah, this is exciting stuff. This is exciting to talk about and just help and shape up the community. Thank all the staff out there, Ms. Redd and the Housing Authority and all the great partnerships and involved. And people like Mr. Farley and the Assistant Director, they really make a difference in those kids' lives, and Mr. Farley's been there for quite some time now, and so there's kids that go back and look up to them, and that's, that's really the difference in it all. And Mayor, I just, I want to thank you as well, and the city manager, for reaching out to our state representative and senator, and this is something that we're starting to do a little bit more, and we can see with the, the grant specialists, that, how much it can come back in return, and maybe that's something we as a board can collectively do, to reach out to them more and get these projects that we want to take care of town. But yeah, Mr. Robinson, when will it come time for us to make that decision on location?
So we're going to, with this approval, after we get the grant application work taken care of, we're going to move into the design phase, and when we come back to you in a few months with, with some options.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Commissioner Kulianis?
First, I want to say shout-out to Officer Q. You know, anybody who had a child raised in, in the Tarpon Springs schools knows how special Officer Q is, so I just wanted to say thank you. So, you know, despite, Robyn? Come forth. I, I think you're, you know, your enthusiasm is actually muted, because it's more than after-school classes and keeping kids busy. You save lives. There have been approximately, what, 2,500 students that have, kids that have come through the program? And I know of many stories, including Sergeant Tureen Mathis, whose life was saved by the Cops and Kids program. These are kids that could have been spending that time doing things that weren't productive, right? And they came through your program, and you, because you never know where a life is going to go this way or go that way. And you're that one little point in time, that one little light, that moves them in a positive way versus a negative way. The chief knows exactly what I'm talking about, and we got to give the special thanks to the person who founded the Cops and Kids program. You know who it is. It's our city manager, Mark Lacorius. He founded the program. And, you know, he's taken a lot of heat for a lot of things in the last year, but let's give him his due.
Absolutely.
These kids' lives are saved. He founded that program.
Yes.
We're here today because that was his dream.
Yes.
And he made it happen.
Yes.
So, I want to thank the city manager. Thank you.
I want to thank PJ back there. If you can raise your hand. She's the one who made the appointments with the Senator Hooper and also Representative Anderson, and I know it took a little bit of getting both them together, so we can meet with them. And I want to make it clear to everybody, we met with these two state officials, because basically, that's our only option for funding at this point. So I want to thank Representative Anderson and also State Senator Hooper for their kind welcome and also their strong support. I honestly thought it went a lot easier than what I was expecting. Not only did they listen to us, but they also provided help on how we should approach this, and, and to make it more successful, or at least improve the chances of it being a success. So I was a little surprised by that, but I, I was very, very appreciative of that, and I think we all should be as well for those two individuals that are working for us. And I know Representative Anderson has got some interest in, in doing some other things with the community as well. I know he spoke to our Chief Young about that, so I'm sure there'll be more discussions about that. Again, tonight is for the, just approving the grant going forward. I believe we already have the motion in a second on the table for that.
Correct.
If there's no further comments, if we can have roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes. Thank you all.
Thank you for your support.
Okay, what we're going to do is, it's 7:51, we need to, I, I know there may be some that want to take a break. Let's go through the ordinances and resolutions, and then, they shouldn't take long, and then after that, we can take a 10-minute break. So, Item 11, Ordinance 2023-21, redesignation of green space, third reading. Mr. Lewis, if you could read that ordinance by title, please.
I can read it for him?
Oh, Ms. Kardashian?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We have Ordinance 2023-21, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, changing the use of a portion of an existing park facility located at the southeast corner of North Safford Avenue and Live Oak Street, 802 North Safford Avenue, from green space to pickleball courts in accordance with Section 8 of the Charter of the City of Tarpon Springs, and providing for the effective date of this ordinance. This was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title with a map on September 20th, 2023. This is third and final reading. Mayor?
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? This is the redesignation of green space here on Safford Avenue, near the intersection with Oakleaf, I'm sorry, Live Oak Street, for the purpose of pickleball courts, and we'll get a better presentation on the number of those later. So are there any public comments on this item? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments? Mr. Jump?
Anyone online would like to speak on this item? Please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
All right, thank you. If there's no further, I should ask, are there any commissioner comments on this item? Okay, may I have a motion in a second, please? So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes. Item 12, Resolution 2023-37, ratification of actions taken following shade meeting of August 22nd, 2023. Ms. Kardashian, if you can read that resolution by title, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Resolution 2023-37, a resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, ratifying and confirming all actions taken to settle the then-pending litigation and concerned citizens of Tarpon Springs versus City of Tarpon Springs, following the shade meeting held on August 22nd, 2023, after accusations of sunshine violations were published in the Tampa Bay Times, providing for severability of actions, providing an effective date.
Okay, thank you. Are, are there any public comments on this item?
Evening. Beer lax 514 Ashland Avenue. So...
So... Basically, the purpose of this resolution, if the people haven't read it, whereas on October 7th, 2023, the Tampa Bay Times published an article accusing the City of Tarpon Springs violating sunshine law for discussing potential litigation with a co-defendant stemming from the same proceedings in project under litigation that was subject of the Shade Meeting. City desires to protect and reinforce its decisions on the subject litigation to every extent possible by ratifying and confirming all actions and decisions of the City Commission-related subject litigation following the August 22nd, 2023 Shade Meeting, and a whole bunch more stuff. So just a little background on what y'all are proving. Now, let's get to the meat of this stuff here. Fortunately, and I did have a chance to read the transcripts to the August 22nd and also the April 25th. And I will say, as a former Commissioner, I don't believe any of the questions and the discussion was not in any way unrelated to the whole topic of all the litigation that this project has created. So as far as having to defend yourselves, I can understand you're wanting to make sure clear to the record that everything you did was within the proper boundaries of your rights to discuss litigation and potential litigation involving the same object. But I do have a problem with how this subject gets covered. First off, we get our local flyer. Thankfully, it came out today, so I can relate to it. Again, the Suncoast News Beacon again recreates Tracy McManus's article. And Tracy, I know you probably listen in. I'm sorry, I'm not sure exactly why it's always this way. But if you read into the article and also into the transcripts, there's talks about mediation and discussions. And the interesting thing here, in the article, it relates to it is nobody ever approached us for any mediation. It's always been with Morgan Group. And I understand the reason why was we're the plaintiffs, and you're the defendants, and they're the defendants. So I can understand that. But the slant is every time an article comes out with regards to our issue, and it's been this way for like the last two, three articles, soon as the article comes out, who gets the comments? Ed Armstrong. He always seems to have the last word. And what does he like to do? Make it political. Y'all were elected as representatives of us because we, the people, wanted you to stand up for a certain thing and a certain value. Tracy, don't call us when these things happen. When the case got thrown out in March, or the order, and then after the appeals, with all this, it's always one-sided, which you hear in the paper. Now, I can't say exactly why, but they depend on advertising. And what is advertising sometimes? Apartments? Insurance for rental insurance? Management fees to send people over to the apartments? I don't know. It just, I would say, at this point, you did nothing wrong. I'm not an attorney. And I would approve of ratifying this resolution just to make it clear to the citizens, y'all did nothing wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on this item? Mr. Jumper, Mr. Racy's, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, Commissioners, any comments from you? Nothing, okay. I may have a motion in a second to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Okay, if there's no further comments, roll call.
Commissioner Kulias?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotis?
Yes. Item 13, Resolution 2023-38, Authorizing Eminent Domain Action. Ms. Kardashian, if you can read the resolution by title.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Resolution 2023-38, A Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, Authorizing an eminent domain action by the city, Providing for legal action against property for public use and public purpose of a public park, Authorizing condemnation proceedings, Providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date. This is first and final reading.
Okay, this is for the purpose of authorizing the, I guess it would be Mr. Salzman, our litigation attorney, to move ahead. Is that correct?
That is correct. I do believe that he had prepared this resolution. I did go ahead and review it and also reviewed some of the pertinent case law. And a public park is deemed under the law to serve a public purpose. There are many examples of eminent domain, both by federal, state, and local governments to provide public parks, as they do enhance the life, welfare, and health of citizens.
Okay, thank you. Let me go to public comments on this item. Are there any public comments? This is for the city taking possession of Lacorius Park, former Lacorius Park.
Anita Protas, 901 Bay Shore Drive. I have a problem with taking that property by eminent domain. It happened to my family, along with former Mayor George Chirakis and Thomas Craig on a piece of property downtown. This is America. And if people don't want to sell their property, they shouldn't be made to give it up to eminent domain. And Mayor Vaticiotis, you and I, for a long, long time, have talked about eminent domain, and right now you have flipped over. And I find that hard to believe. We're stealing that property. The family doesn't want to sell it. Where are the rights here in America and the citizens who have done so much in this community? Are you going to cut the trees down on that property to make a park? Are there that many children who will use it? Or just the tourists that come down there? We should not use eminent domain to take someone's property in this community, in America, when they do not want to give it up. And I'm very disappointed in you in flipping over.
Are there any other public comments? Are there any remote access comments, Mr. Jumper?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay. Let me just make my comments first. First of all, in addition to what Ms. Kardashian said, there should be some kind of a requirement as far as a need that we can justify. And in our comprehensive plan, we've had a shortage, a deficiency of mini-parks, which this would serve that purpose. We had a deficiency of about 13 acres when I started out as a commission. Right now, we have less than that, not a whole lot, maybe an acre and a half less. But every development that we've had come before us, we've always tried to get some kind of a mini-park included in that. So that meshes along well with the case law that Ms. Kardashian mentioned. Also, I want to remind some people in this room that eminent domain was exercised in putting Live Oak Street in 25 years ago. And that road would not be in unless Live Oak, unless this eminent domain took place on those properties. Also, the downtown library would not be there if we didn't exercise eminent domain. So for me, as City Manager, and some of those that are in this room that supported it at that time, there's a purpose for eminent domain. It's a tool. You use it on a case-by-case basis, and you use it when there's a need, not just because you want land. In this particular case, I believe there's a need for this particular property. It's been for sale before. It's, the land uses recreational open space. And I think the Commission was given a memorandum from Ms. Vincent that explained it in a little more detail to this Commission. So I'm comfortable with the approach that we're taking. I think the City Manager has tried for a number of years. And also, I've been kind of waiting for a little more activity as far as discussions with the owners on this. So let me open that up to Commissioner comments on this. Vice Mayor Lunt, do you have anything?
I think I came up before our first discussion when I thought, okay, eminent domain, it's a little heavy-handed way to deal with subjects like this. I understand that there's legal conditions that we meet in order to take this property. And I understand, you know, that the background about there not being any density on this property, et cetera, et cetera. That being said, I can't support this. I still do not believe this is the right way to take somebody's property. I think the justification that we need more park space because we're deficient is not an adequate reason. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Eisner? Commissioner Kulias?
Yeah, I'd like to have this, you know, consider this discussion after the November referendum on that Santorini developers. If the residents end up supporting that, I think it's shape shifts the sponge docks and, you know, around there. And I think we could come back and have a further discussion. I'm just worried about, you know, trying to go through this process if we end up getting in litigation and going back and forth with, you know, we have our counsel, but we may need a special counsel regarding, you know, someone with experience in eminent domain. And I don't know if that current cost of what that property's valued at, with all the litigation going back and forth, and it could be years, what that would all entail cost-wise. So I'd like to just wait another two, three meetings. We have that referendum coming up. I think that's going to be a big statement from the residents of Tarpon Springs about how they feel about the city purchasing property. And I think that'll help give us a guide to have this discussion a little bit further. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Kulias?
You know, eminent domain is, you know, was used throughout the building of our country for highways, the railroad. And in Tarpon, you know, a hospital or, like you say, Live Oak. And it was to, you know, used to, where it had a collective benefit to the city, a collective benefit that helped with commerce or safety or, you know, water pipes, all those things. This is an extreme overreach of government. We have to be really careful. You know, I'm not going to argue whether we need a park, don't need a park, but using eminent domain to tell a person who has their own personal property rights that we want your property. Well, oh, I don't want to sell. It doesn't matter. We want it, so therefore, we are going to take it. But then, you know, the argument, oh, we're giving you good money for it. Maybe I don't want to sell it. And you know, when you give them the money, they have to pay tax on it. So they got a piece of property worth $100,000. And now they are forced to sell it and get the $100,000. And now they have to pay, let's say, a capital gain rate of 20%. And now they've got $80,000. So you have, they're not whole. And maybe they really want to keep their property. Maybe they want to keep it for their family. Maybe they want to keep it for whatever their reason is. You know, this is an overreach. This is a small, little piece of property that's not going to really affect the use of parks in Tarpon. We've got Craig Park, we've got Howard Park, we've got Anderson Park, we've got Dorset Park, we got parks. We don't need this little parcel of property. In addition, like Commissioner Kulias says, we're buying this, we may be buying this $1.8 million other huge parcels that could be green space and park space. We don't need that space. People have rights, and this is an overreach. And all of us should be afraid when government decides, oh, we just want that, and we're taking it from you. And we're going to give you money. Well, I don't want your money. I want my property. So there's no way I'm going for this. And we should all be appalled.
Okay. I've said what I'm going to say. I don't have anything else to add. It was used to build a library downtown. I'm going to ask for a motion. Is there a motion to authorize the city attorneys to move forward with eminent domain?
I'd like to make a motion to table this discussion until after the November referendum results.
Is there a second to that?
I could second that one.
Okay. Is there a further discussion on that?
I just think, you know, whether, how this referendum goes, I think it really will be a message from the residents of Tarpon Springs. There's, there may be some other avenues we may be able to take, considering what the cost of the property is and what litigation could be. Maybe we could offer them an amount. Maybe the residents would have to vote on, I'm not sure. But I just really would like to see what's going to happen with this referendum and the direction this board would like to come back and discuss this topic here after that.
Okay. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. I did drive by, and I just, without cutting down a lot of trees, I don't know how well we could utilize this. I'm glad I did not speak because I did want to hear what all the fellow commissioners and yourself had to say. And each and every person brings up a excellent argument on why they feel yes and why it should be no. But I would like to wait, as Commissioner Kulias said, for the referendum to see, because there's a lot of talk out there with the referendum as well. So let's see what happens with it. I don't particularly like to take somebody's property away as well unless it really has a massive need for the community. And I don't know if a park over there is that need. So I would like to push it off right now as well, so.
I would like to add, and as some of the Commissioners brought up, if we do pursue it to be a park, and it ends up being a park, it will be utilized by the residents in that neighborhood. The youth will come out there, just like I did growing up, when you have your family ties there. And you're friends, you end up hanging out in that area. That's just what we did. So I could see where it would be utilized. But I think there's some other very important factors coming up in the near future in which we can have this discussion talked about fairly soon. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to point out, there is no park down in Greettown. This would be the only one. And I think the 1.8 acres is going to be there, but I don't see that as a park. And if we start telling the people we're going to start spending $1.8 million for a park, I think they may have a problem with voting to pay for it. So I'd like to be a little careful with that. So anyway, all right, if there's no further comments, roll call.
Commissioner Kulias?
No.
This is to table the discussion?
This is to table?
The motion on the floor is to table the discussion until after November 7th election.
No.
Commissioner Kulias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
No.
Mayor Vaticiotis?
Yes. As I stated, Item 14 has been deferred. So what we're going to do is, people ready for a break? Okay, let's take a 10-minute break. We'll reconvene at 8:25. Thanks for being here. That's cool.
I want to reconvene the meeting at 8:25. The next item on our agenda is on the special consent agenda, it is the direction from City Commission to Labor Attorney and Internal Auditor concerning Building Department Audit Report. And Mayor Vaticiotis, that's me, so I'm going to introduce this item. We have with us tonight Ms. Erin Jackson, who's our Personnel Attorney, and also Mr. Pullos is the Internal Auditor for the City of Tarpon Springs. So I've asked them to be here. I provided a memorandum in the backup which describes the purpose of this meeting and basically we had a motion that was very simple last time, simply to table the report. That was on September 19th. And I know during the discussion, there was some comments made from the Commission as far as what they'd like to see, and I don't think that got telegraphed through very well, certainly not from any consensus perspective. And I think we need to kind of go back to that and see what the Commission wants to do specifically for Ms. Jackson and also our Internal Auditor. I want to also mention that I've met with Mr. Pullos, Ms. Kardashian, Ms. Jackson a couple of times, both individually and in subgroups, and I want to be clear that I was invited to these meetings, not the other way around where I convene the meetings. So make sure that that's clear to the Commission as well. So let me just go off. I think at the September 19th meeting, as I said in my memorandum, I think we got off into a different direction than what the purpose of the agenda item was, and that was to present the Building Department Audit Report and also to accept its findings. And let me kind of go back and lay the groundwork for this of how we got up to September 19th. So it's for the benefit of everybody. I provided a copy of emails to the Commission. Some of the emails went to all of the Commission, some of them did not. So I'm going to start back with the beginning of this item. I'll go through these very quickly. August 24th, there was an email from the Internal Auditor, Bill Pullos, to the City Manager, and also to David Gilson, who's the new Building Director. And in that, Mr. Pullos said he's attached a draft copy of the audit report for your review. Let me know if you have any questions, would like to discuss, or if there are any errors that need to be addressed. And also, too specifically, he made a comment to the City Manager to feel free to respond as well. And if you think that Mr. Powell, who's the former Building Development Director, would like to respond to the report, please forward it to him. Since Mr. Pullos didn't have his contact information, and if you think he would like to attend the meeting when it's presented, please invite him. So that was a very simple email, just asking for some feedback. That was about four weeks before September 19th, four weeks before the presentation on September 19th. On September 6th, there was an email from Mr. Gilson, to Mr. Pullos, who basically said, "I prepared my responses to your report. How would you prefer I present them to you?" That was on December 6th, about two weeks after that initial email. Then there was another email the next day from the City Manager, Mark Lacorius, to the current Building Director, David Gilson, and also Mr. Pullos, the Internal Auditor. And whereas the initial email was from Mr. Pullos to Mr. Gilson and also the City Manager, this one from the City Manager went to David Gilson and also the Internal Auditor, but it also copied the Board of Commissioners, Ms. Jackson, our Personnel Attorney, Mr. Salsman, the Litigation Attorney, and also Ms. Kardashian, our General Counsel. And then in that email, he basically states that after much thought and speaking to Mr. Gilson, "My only comment for now is that I believe you should separate the findings, number one and two, from the report you're giving to the Commission on September 19th. I have many serious issues with how it is written and the total lack of balance and factual basis, especially on finding one. You really need to have a conversation with your Board of Commissioners prior to the publicizing these official findings. If it goes to a BOC meeting, it will be a very volatile agenda item, pitting charter officials against each other, which I do not think the BOC wants at this time. A lot more work needs to be done on one and two to be factual, fair and balanced and correct. And finding two needs a conversation with the Labor Attorney on the language and possible recourse by the former employee." Now, this was on September 7th. Mr. Powell, the former Building Director, was no longer a city employee officially as of September 6th, the day before. So now we're referring to Mr. Powell as a former employee. And then basically, the City Manager says, "I'll leave it at that for now. Please include this in this document, and that I don't plan to talk to you further about this until after the BOC has a chance to offer you direction." And this was two weeks prior to September 19th. And again, this was not just to Mr. Gilson and Mr. Pullos, but it was to those that I spoke, including the City Attorneys. The same day, I wrote an email response, and this is where the City Manager commented the last time we discussed this, was about the "for alarm" comment. And I said, "I start out with, okay, I've read this email chain." Now, my email, instead of to the Commission, of course, it was just to the City Manager, Mr. Pullos, and then I copied the Personnel Attorney, the Litigation Attorney, and also our General Counsel on this. So basically, I said that, and this was on September 7th, right after I received a copy, too, from the City Manager. "Okay, I've read this email chain, and quite frankly, the tone of the discussion of this matter is already being set by these emails regardless of what the report says. I've not seen the report, but Mr. Pullos and I have briefly discussed the audit along with his other work. I can see Ms. Kardashian and Ms. Jackson reviewing the draft report concerning language. However, I do not believe that a for-alarm alert was needed to all attorneys and the Commission. Nevertheless, it's certainly within the City Manager's prerogative to do so." That was September 7th. So it pretty much starts going from something requesting for comment to something a little more, I would call it adversarial. And I think it kind of escalated from there. I think Mr. Pullos's next email was from himself, individually, the Mayor, Vice Mayor Lunt, Commissioner Eisner, Commissioner Kulyas, and Commissioner Kulyanis. And he copied Ms. Jackson, our Personnel Attorney, Mr. Salsman, our Litigation Attorney, and Ms. Kardashian, our General Counsel, and the City Manager. And basically, he says there first, "There's nothing in this report that is not factual. A discussion about the report cannot be read unless it is read by all parties, so I have attached it." Up until this point, nobody had the copy of the report, other than Mr. Gilson, the current Building Director, and also the City Manager. And fourth, the new Director provided me with his responses yesterday afternoon, and they addressed the findings adequately. Of course, they didn't address findings number one and two. He also did not note any factual issues with the report. We also had a positive discussion about the audit and his responses." Now, that was from Mr. Pullos in response to the City Manager's email. Now, first, let me just say something to continue on with this. I have complete confidence in Mr. Pullos. I've said that before, and I'm going to continue saying it. I think on the report of the 19th, he presented facts. There were facts. They may have been circumstantial, but they're facts nonetheless. And they weren't wrong. They were facts, maybe circumstantial. People go to trial on circumstantial facts. On the 19th, Mr. Pullos was largely criticized by others using the same thing, circumstantial information, just like he was criticized of. And some of that information was not factual, untrue. So about a week later, I met with Mr. Pullos, and he showed me not just circumstantial information, but conclusive information of what he had presented in finding one and two. And in about a week after that, he also showed me where there were additional information with a couple of employees involved in this as well on the periphery. So basically, Mr. Pullos has described what happened. He certainly hasn't filled in all the blanks as far as the details of what happened, and also he hasn't described or determined why it happened. And I think that's the part of an investigation that should go further to the Personnel Attorney and perhaps our General Counsel as well. And on top of that, I've conducted my own review of this, and I didn't ask city employees what their recollection was, or what they thought, or ask them specific questions for them to give me their information. I actually went to the written record, and I provided that report to our attorneys, and I'm waiting to hear from them to determine whether I can actually share that with the Commission. If I get in the green light with that, I'd certainly make that available to you. I'm not going to send it to you, but I'd make it available to the City Clerk, and you can request it directly from her or anybody else for that matter. So tonight, and I mentioned this for one reason. I think that we're a little unfair to Mr. Pullos. I think we did have a for-alarm situation where we didn't have to. The draft report was given to everybody 12 days before the presentation, and the best I can tell, there was a whole lot of communication concerning that with Mr. Pullos. Now, you know, I don't know. But one thing I do know is that after the 19th, in trying to bring that back for a subsequent rehearing, I'd asked for that, and then Ms. Kardashian recommended that we tabled the item until further discussion by the attorneys. Now, that email, quite frankly, I would have really appreciated that coming prior to the meeting of this 19th, or else we could have averted a lot of what happened on the 19th. And that's all I want to say about that. So tonight, I'm saying this to kind of moderate the situation, and that we don't wind up pointing fingers here and there, because as far as I'm concerned, we're all involved in this. We could have done a better job, and fundamentally, I think we were unfair to Mr. Pullos in how we handled it. We could have dealt with him earlier, before the presentation on the 19th, but we did not. And we could have tabled the items certainly that night, or even before that, as far as that motion being made before the presentation was even given. So tonight's presentation, I mean, tonight's agenda item, is to try and get some direction from the Commission. The way I see this going is that Mr. Pullos has requested that this item be removed from the table, to be presented at some point in the future. I don't know if, and again, he's demonstrated whether you argue whether what he presented on the 19th was factual or not. It was factual, it's just circumstantial. He's presented some conclusive information now. So that's one option. The other option is to have Ms. Jackson and even Ms. Kardashian work with our Internal Auditor to change the language of the report, to soften it, but the report's public. It's public information. And since then, the City, the Internal Auditor has provided you with some additional information demonstrating what he has found is to be conclusively factual, not just circumstantial. But as I said, a lot of the detail that is not his responsibility of why, of what happened, the detail of what happened, and also why it happened, I think is left for someone else. And I think that would be a third option for the City Commission to direct the Personnel Attorney and the General Counsel to look into that further. And I think if they choose to do that, obviously, I think the information that I provided in the report is probably not going to become made public until that investigation is done, or whatever term you want to call it, further review or whatever. Certainly, that's something that I'd like to see discussed tonight, whether there's any interest in doing that. So that's what I have. I'm going to, actually, before I go to Ms. Jackson, I'm going to ask if there's any public comments on this matter, and then we'll go to Ms. Jackson and see if you have anything that you'd like to say or ask the Commission of what you're looking for on this. It would be fair to you and also Ms. Kardashian, you as well.
I did have my light on. I actually was going to ask if the next thing that we could do, rather than public comment, is let Ms. Jackson go, because she may answer some of the questions or address some of the issues that may arise with her information that she's going to share with the Commission.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. So I spent quite a bit of time going through all of the City Charter, all the rules and regulations, all of the correspondence, the reports and the memorandum from you, Mayor. Thank you. And I just want to say that ultimately, I think what's important to understand here is that we should go back to the City Charter to understand the role of everyone involved, including the Internal Auditor, the City Manager, and the Board of Commissioners. And each of you must have the freedom to perform the job that you're required to perform under the Charter and in conformance with the City's rules and regulations. And to effectively perform those duties, each must stay in their own lane, as defined by the Charter. So to start, the Internal Auditor, under the Charter, Section 14, ultimately, the Charter provides that he is to audit all departments for compliance. And his focus should be on structural improvement, ultimately, of departments. And according to the Charter, once he's concluded his audit, he is to report any concerns or recommendations for improvement to the City Manager and to the Board of Commissioners. Now, the Board of Commissioners's role is, of course, to exercise oversight, and to do that, the Board needs to gather information it might need to effectively ensure the proper service to the public through its charter officers. And so the Board of Commissioners is restricted in some ways under the Charter, under Section 13, because it can't give direct orders to employees directly. It can ask questions, and it can essentially conduct its own individual inquiries, but it can't give direct orders. That has to come through the City Manager pursuant to the Charter and the City's rules and regulations. And that's because the City Manager is ultimately responsible for the day-to-day operations of the City and the City's personnel. And it's the City Manager's obligation to ensure that the City's personnel comply with the rules and regulations. And so concerns related to the departmental structure should be raised by the Auditor if he finds something in the course of conducting his audit. And any concerns in that regard, again, reported to the City Manager and to the Board of Commissioners. And that gives the City Manager the opportunity to fix and address the problems with the personnel, because it's the City Manager's role to address those problems, not the Internal Auditor's role. And so the City Manager also can work with and should work with the Human Resources Department to further address any personnel issues. And that's because there are confidentiality requirements pursuant to Florida statute when we're looking at potential misconduct of City personnel. And Human Resources and City Manager have routinely, in their duties, had to conduct those sorts of investigations and determine whether disciplinary action is ultimately appropriate if there is misconduct that has caused issues with regard to compliance with rules and regulations. And so it's just really, really important to kind of take it back and look at the big picture here, and understand that everyone needs the freedom within their role under the Charter. So the Internal Auditor needs his freedom to conduct his audit on the departmental level, structural level, to report that to the Board of Commissioners so that they can exercise their freedom and oversight, and report that to the City Manager, who can then exercise his freedom to make sure that the day-to-day operations are run appropriately, to address and fix the problems that may be causing these concerns that are related to the audit, the departmental concerns, and to specifically address the personnel issues, because personnel is the City Manager's lane. So that's what I wanted to share with you all. Just, I think it's important as we look at all, rather than digging into the facts here, I don't think that that's my role, but ultimately, just looking through the City Charter, the rules and regs, and making sure that everybody understands what the Charter provides in terms of the duties of each of you.
Okay, I think that's a little helpful, and I know that's the way the process is supposed to work. And in my opinion, it hasn't worked here. And as I said, what we did was not a very structured approach. I think the Internal Auditor did forward his report in good faith on August 24th and asked for comments. Two weeks later, he got not just a response that went to him, but he also received a response that went to everybody, the three attorneys, the Commission, the whole thing. So this idea of the Internal Auditor working directly with the City Manager to iron out any issues before that, and give the City Manager an opportunity to fix any problems or address them, didn't happen. And that's my point here. I think that we've had internal audits done before, they've gone very smoothly, and I think that's because there's been that dialogue between the Internal Auditor, the staff, and also the City Manager. And this one, it just automatically ramped up to being something adversarial, and there didn't seem to be any kind of inquiry on the point that, well, maybe the Internal Auditor may have a point. Let me look into it from the staff perspective. But instead, what we had was, you know, check your facts and the whole thing. Well, the Internal Auditor did check his facts, and he was right. The information may have been circumstantial, but he was right. Now, I understand, I think what you're saying is maybe, I don't want to read into what you're saying. Is it basically that perhaps the Internal Auditor could have stopped short with the information he provided? Now, I want to, again, say that the information he provided was to the City Manager, not to the world. It was just to the City Manager and the current Building Director. So I'm not sure what you're asking or commenting about, as far as whether... I know what you're describing, how it's supposed to work, but it didn't work that way, is what I'm getting at. And we're trying to decide how to go about this particular building report, moving it into the future. I think future internal audits will probably, hopefully, be a little more reasonable in the way you're describing it, but in this particular one. And by the way, I'm not trying to find fault. I'm just trying to get an understanding how this whole thing broke down. I think that there's some issues here that I think go beyond what the Building Department Audit is, and I point some of those out in my report to you. And, you know, at some point, I'd like to get some understanding of that. So do you understand what I'm asking? Are you suggesting that maybe the Internal Auditor went too far?
Do you want me to answer that? Yes. I mean, in this particular circumstance, I think that the Internal Auditor should have stopped at the department level with regard to there potentially being some issues within the department. And then to get to the personnel level, the City Manager would do that. And so the Internal Auditor may flag some concerns with regard to, oh, this process doesn't look like it's operating correctly, or this doesn't look like it's quite operating the way that it should, but to the extent that we're getting to personnel issues and specifically identifying issues with employees, that should be handled by the City Manager and Human Resources so that the appropriate level of confidentiality pursuant to Florida statutes, so that we ensure that.
Well, let me ask you, when did he do that?
When did he do?
When did he go beyond what he needed to do?
In the report.
When in the report? He provided a draft to the City Manager. You feel he went too far in what he presented to the City Manager in a draft form?
Well, I mean, I think that he can alert the City Manager to, this looks like this could be a concern, you should look into it further. That's fine. But to ultimately find that there's been a violation of a regulation or a rule within the City's personnel rules and regulations, that's the role of the City Manager, after an investigation cloaked in confidentiality, as required by Florida statute.
Right, so my point is...
...regard to the employees specifically.
My point again, is this one is a draft report to only two people, the City Manager and the Building Director. It didn't go to anybody else. And the City Manager came back and made it an issue for everyone. And not only that, Mr. Pullos felt that it was unfair at the time to basically talk about that without others having access to the report. And I guess what I'm saying is that I don't particularly think Mr. Pullos was out of line the way he handled it initially. I think that after this took on a life of its own, I think maybe you can argue that point. And I think that also, I want to point out that that draft report went to everybody before the 19th, and that there were no comments as far as maybe tabling this thing. If, let's say, there was conversation with Mr. Pullos, and that he wasn't agreeing, and that there were some concerns on the part of the attorneys or whoever, let's just table this and not hear it until the 19th, until we can get this at the staff level ironed out a little more clear. That's what I'm saying. So I understand what you're saying, and I think it did become an issue at some point. But I think in Mr. Pullos, in fairness to him, he started out trying to get comments back from people. He got comments back from Mr. Gilford, but he basically got a lot of other things back from the City Manager, rather than actually looking into that further at the department level, the City Manager, to find out whether there's any credence to what Mr. Pullos was saying. I think subsequent to that, Mr. Pullos demonstrated that there was credence and that what he found was conclusive. And in my opinion, that's probably unfortunate that that way that happened, but nevertheless, it has happened. That's what I'm trying to say. So I understand, but it's an idealistic approach that you're taking, and I think in most cases, that works that way. It's supposed to work that way. But in this particular case, I think it took on a life of its own and quickly escalated to something it shouldn't have. And I think that, again, Mr. Pullos was largely held in terms of responsibility that I think was unfair to him, just because of the way this whole thing was handled beginning August 24th. So, do you want to say anything?
Yes, I do. So what I would like to point out and make clear is, this is not an issue of whether or not what he put in the report was factual. This is an issue of whether or not he should have been doing things in the manner that he was doing them, and the answer to that is no. Mark acted appropriately when he notified your counsel and notified the Commission that there was an issue with the report and what was going on here. Now, it takes time to vet that, and multiple people asked him to withdraw the report from the agenda, and he refused. That's also an issue here. You know, what Erin has advised you of is that this is not in his lane. This isn't somebody else's lane. And you need to keep those lines very clear to protect the City, because that is how your City Charter reads, that is how your City is supposed to function.
I understand what you're saying.
Point of order, is this just a back and forth?
Not yet. I have the floor, you're out of order.
But does the rest of the board have opportunity?
Quiet, please.
You know how to use that, huh? Great, great.
Quiet. It's my agenda item. I understand what you're saying, Ms. Kardashian. However, there was no... However, there was no shyness on the part of sending a memorandum to table the item until this was dealt with more with Ms. Jackson, and I'm saying that this report, the draft, was given to the attorneys on September 7th, the same, which was 12 days before the report, and that memorandum to, to the commission to request that this be tabled could have been done shortly after that as well.
So, it was requested, and it was requested directly of the auditor. It was his report, and we advised him that it would be better if he would table it until he had the opportunity to discuss it with both, with your lawyers.
He didn't do that.
You're right.
So, isn't that your responsibility to intervene when you see something that the municipal corporation may be in jeopardy by, by what actions somebody might take?
I did, and we have, and that's why we're here right now. Both of us have now, at this point, and I have met with nothing but resistance regarding the requests for revision so that he can do it in the manner that's prescribed by the charter.
Okay, that's the purpose of tonight's meeting, but I'm just speaking of how we got there and where we're going to go from here and what the commission wants to do. So, Ms. Jackson, did you have anything else? Ms. Kardashian?
No, sir.
Mr. Pullos, would you like to say a few things?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I'll just be real brief. Ms. Jackson said two words that don't appear in Section 14 of the charter, that's the internal auditor section, and that's structural and personnel issues. Those words don't appear in the charter at all. I'll tell you what does appear in it, it says, "Audits of all departments for compliance with city-written policies and procedures, federal, state, and local laws, and maintain compliance as may be required by the State Auditor General." That's what it says, that's what I did. Now, we're starting to add what the internal auditor can do, what he can't do. If that's going to be the case, let me know what policies I can look at, which ones I can't. But we can't come after the fact and say, oh, no, we don't like, you know, well, we don't, we don't like what you did now because, because you stumbled on something that's inconvenient, and we don't like it. Furthermore, you're right, Mayor, I gave, I gave the audit to the city manager and to Director Gilson, and I didn't, I didn't get any response from it. Ms. Kardashian says she, she advised me, she advised me at 6:00 PM on the night of the meeting on the 19th, she came to my office at 6:00 PM. What am I going to do with that? Ms. Jackson, I have, I've talked to her, the last time I talked to her was on the, what was it, the 29th, I believe, and you said you'd get back to me, and you still have not gotten back to me. I've not received any emails, any other calls from you. The fact of the matter is, I gave the city manager, I gave the director, I gave the HR director, I gave anyone, anyone who wanted an opportunity to respond to it. And when they talk about, when they talk about, when the, when the, when the two attorneys talk about confidentiality and all that, that's if a complaint's filed. There's been no complaint here. Mr. Powell could have filed a complaint, he didn't file a complaint. City manager could have done an investigation, he chose not to do an investigation. And the only one, the only one who, the only one who should be here arguing on his behalf is Mr. Powell or his counsel, and I don't see them here.
Well, let's talk about the report, Mr. Pullos.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it's, 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 it's completely factual, I was trying to, I was trying to not dig in too deep because I didn't want people to say, oh, you know, it looks personal, you know, I don't know Mr. Powell, I, I, I don't know, I don't know many of the directors that well. And, you know, I tried to, I tried to not dig that deep, and then the 19th happened, and all of a sudden, I get accused of doing sloppy audit work, and, and that just doesn't play well with me. And, and, I mean, it took literally five minutes for me to start, to start finding projects where it was clear he was moonlighting. We know he wasn't coming to work, the staff told me he wasn't coming to work. The city manager himself told us on the 19th he wasn't coming to work. So, I, so you have a factual report, I know it's inconvenient, I get that. Everyone had an opportunity to respond. The city manager just said, hey, I'm going to investigate this with the HR department. Can you hold off on those? Hey, no problem. I didn't get that response, though.
So, what would you like to see going forward, Mr. Pullos?
That's, that's a good question, I've never had, I've never had an audit tabled. I don't even know anyone who's ever had an audit table, to be honest with you, I've never seen anything like this, and I like my report to be accepted because it's factual. Like I said, it may not be convenient, people may not like it, but it's factual, and I haven't heard anyone question any facts yet.
Okay.
So, but like, that's up to the board, though.
All right, thank you. Let me go to the public now. Are there any public comments so far, based on what you've heard, then I'm going to go to the commission comments?
I swore to myself when I got out of office that I would not come back.
Pardon me?
Jim Coliannes, Circle Drive, Tarpon Springs. I think we're missing some points here. He said, she said, I did, you did, that's not the point. The point in, is that this gentleman was overly aggressive. When he made the report, he was overly aggressive. I read a, portions of a book yesterday about what an internal auditor does. They do it in a calm methodology. If you have to sit down with somebody, you don't raise your voice, you don't accuse them, you don't force them to walk out of the room. That's the problem. Circumstantial? I would have been fired if I gave my boss a circumstantial answer. That's, and then to come back, well, I, I got the real thing now. You're protecting him, and I appreciate that, that's your job as a mayor, but circumstantial? And then come back and make it right? Does, does he get all the blame? No. But, let me tell you something, this is Tarpon Springs. You guys, ladies and gentlemen, are responsible for making this work. It's not wor, it can't work if you have one person at the top that's overly aggressive. It can't. You can't take it, you can't allow it, or what's happening now will happen more often because your whole group of people, your whole, the whole town, it's, it's, it's not what they want. It, it wasn't done right, I was back there, I listened to it, I watched it, I watched the aggression, and I would hope that you guys keep this table. I think you give, you need to give us some thought about where you want the city to go so we never have to do this again, when one employee upsets another employee so bad that they leave, okay? And really, doesn't want to talk to them about it, to do their jobs. So, now you've got two people in this town that can't even talk, and it's one person's fault. It will be five persons' fault, people's fault, if you don't do something about it. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other public comments? Did you want to come over here? Yes.
Anita Prost, 901 Bay Shore Drive. When I was in office, we had internal auditors. None of us interfered with the internal auditor. Somebody here on this board is overstepping their boundary. The community is very upset with what's going on, again, we have another black mark on us. Let us do right, let the internal auditor know what he's supposed to do, take the advice of a very bright attorney you have and this lady here. That report was a direct hit on our city manager, and people are getting sick and tired of this. They're tired of what's going on, they're tired of someone trying to play two roles in this city, you can't do it. Your commissioners, we have a commissioner who is a mayor who cuts a ribbon and congratulates the people who come to our community. Do your job right, we've got to get our community back in harmony again, and this report didn't do it. Look into the background of your internal auditor and see why he's had problems. Thank you.
Next, please, thank you.
I just have one question. What is the point to hire an internal auditor and then question him and question his findings and question his credibility? I don't understand that. I mean, that's why you, you have an internal auditor. My other question is, when is the last time we've had an internal audit? Does anyone have an answer for that?
Fifteen years ago, fifteen years ago or so.
What is the, what is the typical audit, internal audit that cities do? Does it vary? Is it, is there a standard, like any, you know, once every five years, once every three years? Anyone know that?
There were some issues with an interpretation of what a city auditor's position was, and there was interpretation in 2010 that that internal auditor did not have to be a city employee. So, at that time, it was contracted out to auditing, auditing firms that came in and basically targeted specific areas that were determined by the, by the commission, I don't know if that helps. So, we haven't had an internal auditor until the charter was changed and made it a permanent city employee, which was in 2020.
Okay. Yeah, it just, it makes, it makes no sense, you have an internal auditor and then discredit him, I don't, I don't understand that, so.
Madam Clark, did you get the speaker's name and address for the record?
I did not, but I know who he is.
Yeah, my name, Jason Sardulus, 634 East Orange Street. Thank you.
Here, Lax 514, Ashland Avenue. Misinformation and lack of information. First off, you go on the backup, just that one page, you read a few chosen emails, but from what I understand, there's a lot of other emails, and there's also some legal memorandum. And as the gentleman said, you may be trying to protect Mr. Pullos, but we have seen this trend now. We have seen this trend. Yes, there may have been facts, but I spoke out at that meeting based on what I read, and it wasn't a complete record. So, I based my opinion on what was presented to me. And then Commissioner Coliannes, as a commissioner should do, does, hey, wait a second, something don't smell right, let me see what, for myself. He comes out, and he comes out with a timetable of all these things that should have been presented or put in perspective, and it changes your opinion somewhat. So, part of the reason you're having this, again, is the potential for litigation. Mr. Powell can come back and say, you're slamming my character, you're defaming me, it's liable. I would like to see the memos in the record of what the attorneys advised you. How can I comment on, yes, that's a good action or not unless we know all the facts? And again, we're here without all the facts. You say he has conclusive evidence. I didn't see it in the agenda backup. How are you going to convince us, the public, that you're working under integrity and honesty if you're not showing us the facts to base your decisions on? So, as the gentleman said, there's a little maybe error in both ways, but at that meeting, with this and some of the other items on there, the impression was to discredit our current city manager by various items on that agenda. And I know Mark, he's loyal to his staff, he will defend them. Now, whether Mr. Powell did anything against code of ethics or morals or legal standards, that's not for me to decide. You've paid two attorneys to look at it. I'd like to hear their opinions as to where you technically stand legally with regards to this particular issue. Because I'd hate to see y'all approve a report without conclusive evidence for everyone to know about, and the attorney said, like as she said, they asked, hold it off, hold it off. So, obviously, there must be some concern about the language or the tone of the report. So, before y'all make a decision, let's put everything out on the table so we all know where everything is coming from, what is the true facts, what are the coincidences, and then you can legally, logically, make a decision. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other public comments? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
On this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do have a raised hand, I'll allow the first person in.
Okay.
If you can unmute and state your name and address for the record. You have lowered your hand and raised your hand. If you can unmute and state your name and address for the record. And they're having technical difficulties, and we do not have any other raised hands.
Okay. That's it, Mr. Jump, no further raised hands?
No, sir, no other raised hands at this time.
Okay, Commissioner Vice Mayor Lott?
I have a couple of things to say. First of all, I have no doubt that the bulk of this audit is, in fact, facts. What I had a problem with, and I typically have a problem with with some of our audit reports, is the personalizations. I think the passion from our auditor definitely shows through, maybe a little bit too much. Now, and that's in general. In, in specific, related to this particular audit, there's a couple of things I need to point out. There is a Section 14 in the charter that says that, that Labor and Employment Council provide review of the commission duties, et cetera, et cetera, but it's not the job of the city auditor to provide for labor and employment investigations. Which part of this was, and I think that was unnecessary. I think if he's going to go down, he should say, the director of this department or whatever, but he shouldn't complain about individual personnel actions. I mean, that's, that's just not his job. And in this case, it's done, it's out in public, it's time to move on from that sort of thing. The other thing I want to bring up is there's a, there's another, there's another clause in there. Written complaints and allegations, and this is coming straight paraphrased from one of our lawyers, written complaints and allegations, and this is in writing, are confidential and exempt from disclosure, which means disclosure is prohibited. are confidential and exempt from disclosure, which means disclosure is prohibited. Not discretionary at all, prohibited. In other words, they shouldn't be in this specific report because this report becomes a public matter. So my position in this is, yes, there's a lot of factual information here. I actually like the passion and the detail provided, especially the easy reading capabilities provided by our auditor. But personalizations and assumptions towards those need to be redacted before we actually make this an official public document. And that's where I stand. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Eisner.
Thank you, Mayor. Reading from the charter, I know somebody read Number A, which is audits of departments for compliance with city written policies and procedures. And on Number H also states that perform special examinations. Now, that's a bit vague because there's no real determination of what a special examination is or isn't. Personally, I don't think that our auditor would have done any sort of special examination if he wasn't subjected to a cross-examination of his determination. I don't know why the city manager hasn't taken upon himself to move forward and do this investigation. And that's, I believe, why the auditor has thrown it back in our lap. Because he's another charter official. Charter official can't speak to another charter official and tell them what to do. We can. Now, I'm not really interested in doing anything that would put the city at risk. So my recommendation is to have the attorney and the labor attorney move ahead with the proper protocol of what our charter calls for and what HR calls for, to move ahead with the city manager and find out the proper manner and way with which we could move forward and get the proper information to all of the residents of what transpired and doing it in a legal way so that we don't have any repercussions. Just throwing it out there is not a good idea. There is rules and regulations. And, but there's been no following of the rules and regulations. It's easy to ask the auditor to get information and report it to the city manager. And I know in the rules and regulations, the city manager gets with the HR department and they set up a meeting and then there's a meeting and proper protocol on what they do with the person if there is violations, but none of that happened. So if it didn't happen and you're calling out an auditor who's giving you a position, I mean, he was working remotely. And I know my Commissioner Kulianis asked Ms. Kardashian about whether the city manager has the ability and the wherewithal and the power to allow someone to work remotely. And she said, yes. But was it wise? If the permit department worked along with a very smooth running, I would say, yes, that was a wise decision, but it wasn't. And if there was other moonlighting that was done and the city manager didn't know about it, he's at fault that he didn't know about it because he allowed that to go on. So, you know, the city manager has the ability to let every department head work remotely. Nobody has to show up to work. But there's ramifications for that, and it's ramifications to the taxpayer, to the residents. And it's our job as the five commissioners up here to reprimand or to do whatever's feasibly necessary in a vote to speak to the city manager on what he did or didn't do. So I do believe it's the auditor's job to report to the commission so that we can handle the matter the way we're supposed to handle it. So I think there was, the best that the auditor can do is to give us the information. I don't believe his purpose and goal was to go do a fact-finding forensic type of investigation. But truthfully, I stood here and his audit could have gone very smoothly with a couple of input from Mr. Powell or our city manager. It didn't. He kind of was ignored except for denial. And then he came up before us and he was interrogated as he put out a very poor audit. That's why I kind of, I looked away a little bit from his passion. And I understand what my vice mayor had said. But when you're called out on your honesty, which he's admitted numerous times, he's never been called out on that. And when he's called out on his presentation and he's, and I like my fellow commissioner here, but he was told that he wouldn't speak in front of a $600 an hour attorney and he would get ridiculed. But the auditor isn't a $600, he's not going in front of a $600 attorney. He's going in front of $8 an hour commissioners. And he has to present this to us so that we could understand what is being done and how we resolve it. I have no want to do anything to Mr. Powell or to anybody else that, truthfully, as you said, is the position of the city manager. But if the city manager doesn't do something with an investigation working with the auditor, then we are to be involved. And that's where I think, I think that's where it's off. But I don't want to speak about anything that will put our city at risk of a lawsuit. I mean, I would like to hear what the city manager has to say about this. I didn't actually speak to him about it because I was a little upset to hear this. This came on the same day that we heard about the reading of the emails, which I wasn't happy about as well. So I did read Ms. Kardashian's response, which the vice mayor spoke about, that we cannot speak about this at all. It is a violation and I don't want to speak about it. But I think somebody should look into it to see if it's viable, if it's not, and to follow the protocol of what our city charter calls for. And then, once the city manager and the auditor and our HR department has all of the facts, I think it should come back to us to decide whether the city manager wants to go ahead with something, whether we want to go ahead with reprimanding the city manager, however it should be. But all the facts have to come out, the residents need to hear all the facts eventually. And it should also be done in the sunshine. So there were a lot of comments made. I did like the fact that Commissioner Kulianis did speak a number of times about tabling this and handling it until we could get guidance from our legal department because that is the most important thing. I mean, I have plenty more, but I'd like the rest of my commission to speak. I think I covered enough information. I would like to be in a position to have our legal department work with our city manager and our HR department and anybody else that has any dealings with this. And to get to the bottom, you know, Mr. Powell's not working for us anymore. I don't think he wants to come back and sue us, I don't think we want to sue him. I mean, you know, so I'm just wanting to get the facts out and do it in the right manner. Give him the wherewithal, the honor and the rights that he has to speak his mind, which we haven't heard. I mean, that is what the auditor spoke about. He said he's not here to defend himself. I haven't heard anything from the city manager except that we should speak to the HR department. I don't want to speak to the HR department. I need to have these facts discussed. So that's what I want to say. Thank you.
Let me finish with the commission. Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes, I got a question for both attorneys. Are we able, tonight, could we, and with your guidance and counsel, are we able to accept findings three through nine from the audit report tonight?
Technically, that's not on the agenda. You can consider it. I'm assuming, without looking at the report itself, that those are the findings that don't relate to the personnel issues. And the ones that don't relate to the personnel issues, which would be within the course and scope of the charter, then that's, I would not have a problem with that now.
Okay, and if we're trying to understand how the charter and just having the internal auditor to look in certain processes in our department, I believe findings three through nine address that. And they address them in a way where we talk about the permits and the efficiency of the permitting process and other parts of efficiency in the department is addressed. I have an issue with the findings one and two with, because of this email that did come in and it's pretty detailed. And, you know, I would encourage some board members to read it publicly so you could understand why, you know, a commissioner like myself would have to take this stance. And wanting to accept certain portions of the audit report, not only to protect the city, but make sure we look, that reports don't go this manner in the future when it comes to going in a direction where it looks like it's overseeing any one individual in a department. And so I do want to progress this forward. I don't think both attorneys need to get back and try to clean this up any more than what we understand it is. We understand the audit report. We understand some of the issues or liability or concerns that could come out if we as a board accept the first two findings as they are or even with the addendums. Concerns about that. I think the audit itself did its job in proving the efficiencies that we could try to work on in the permitting process. And I don't want staff to, or even our council to try to go back and figure this all out. I think we have a clear understanding. I don't know what, you know, what we're trying to get out of it other than we have a position that's being filled, we have a new building director. Things are taking its turn and that email, I don't want to read it. You know, I think maybe someone else should read it up here just for transparency. But it puts us in a position where I have two different attorneys that are giving very similar advice on the first couple of findings. And so I do want to take that advice for the city. And there's also very frank where it says, if we go forward, maybe that individual, the auditor, will have the sovereignty or the immunity for the city. And so that's concerning, you know, if we go to approve something like that, we're basically allowing that liability to be exposed. And that's my biggest concern. And I really want to get this put behind us as we can move forward. And that's all I'm going to say for this current moment.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Okay. So, you know, this is the story of two audits. There's the policy and procedures, and then there's the Kevin Powell situation. I think the city manager's answer when he first read the report was exactly the correct answer. Separate the Kevin Powell from the policies and procedures. He said that, did you not?
In two memos.
Okay, so he said that. And that's exactly the same advice that we're getting from both of our attorneys, correct?
Yes.
Correct. That these are two separate matters that should be handled separately. You know, so, and I, I wish, and I'm going to tell you that I was remiss in not reading the report sooner. Just like I do on sometimes, I get my agenda and I read, you know, maybe on, we're going to meet on Tuesday and I might read it, you know, Sunday night. Okay, and that's just the facts of life. I mean, I'm sure there's things I've read on Monday night or I've read them Tuesday morning. Okay. I wish I had read it, I would have come and seen you sooner, Billy. And you know that you and I have had a very good relationship. And people think that I was interrogating you or being rough on you. First of all, you're not a wallflower, so you can take it. And I have respect for you. I think, like Commissioner Kulianis said, three through nine, I think it was three through eight, but is there a nine or? I thought it was eight, but anyways. That portion of the audit was really good. And it had real sound, you know, advice that we could move forward and make that department better. And I know that the new director is, you know, I spoke to him and he said he was anxious to work with you and he's already started even implementing some of the things that you had in that report. So the report was effective. It did the job. The Kevin Powell stuff, you know, I made a phone call to Attorney Kardashian. And I said, I got some problems with us airing out an employee matter in public. And she said, yes, that that was problematic, right? Remember our conversation? Okay, and then I said, well, I'm going to go have, again, and I apologize for the late, and I know it put you on a huge spot and I know it wasn't fair to you to get a six o'clock meeting with her and a 5:30 meeting with me, right? But I came and talked to you and I said, hey, Billy, maybe pull, table this thing. Just wait till the next meeting, talk to legal and make sure that we can really talk about these things in public. I was concerned, okay? And I know it put you on the spot and I know you, you know, wanted to get your report out there and you made that decision. Nobody could tell you not to. Another charter official can't tell another charter official you can't make a report. She suggested it, I suggested it. And, you know, the rest is what happened. But, you know, the, you know, this was a labor matter. And am I wrong? Okay, this was a labor matter. And, you know, let's talk about how crazy that meeting got. And you want to point all the fingers at me. But we had a commissioner who said, and this is why I was angry with you, my friend, for gaveling me. And I said, boy, it's nice you know how to use the gavel. You had a commissioner who said they got a, that somebody told them that Kevin Powell might have been paying people off to work from home. If that didn't deserve a gavel, and my comments deserve gavel, then I'm sorry. That was, and we're talking about being concerned about getting sued and we're making That was, and we're talking about being concerned about getting sued, and we're making statements like that? You know, that's where this thing got nuts, okay? And, you know, there was, you know, talk about circumstantial. Okay, there was a timeline, and I expressed myself to Billy. Billy, I think there should, we need a little more context in this stuff. And that's why, and we met the day after that it was tabled. And I asked Billy, I said, Billy, I think it would be best if you bifurcated this report. Do your three, three through nine or eight as a separate. Because, first of all, and we agreed that it got lost in the Kevin Powell stuff. The Kevin Powell stuff like overwhelmed it to where nobody was hearing your real story, which is, the real story is that you could help that department get better. Okay? And then the Kevin Powell thing should have been handled through the way an employee issue should be handled, not here on the board, and not having outrageous statements made against somebody. If anybody deserves, talking about being unfair, and we're unfair to Kevin Powell. This guy's getting slammed all over the place in a public forum, and he, you know, and people say, well, he could have objected. But that's not his thing. He doesn't have to come here from Stark, Florida to object, and he doesn't have to answer to Billy Pulis or anybody else. He's got rights. And I think that his rights as an employee were violated. He should not have had that stuff aired out. It should have gone through the process, whether you were brought in to advise, whether it went to HR, or it went to the city manager. And if the city manager was somehow complicit in this, whatever thing that was incorrect, then there's still avenues to deal with that, correct? Okay, and it wasn't in a public forum, and it wasn't with the commissioners. This is not our job. We're not, we do not have direct authority over employees in the city. And this guy was an employee of the city and had rights as an employee. So, he had no due process. He was just brought out. You had people coming up here, you know, saying all kinds of stuff about this guy. And there was no gaveling on anybody, just letting Kevin Powell just be ripped to shreds. Okay? Maybe he did something wrong, but maybe he didn't. And the Vice Mayor is exactly right. This was not the place to air out this man's employee problems. Okay? You know, and if this is about, you know, folks, everything isn't, everything isn't as pure as you might want it to be. There's politics involved, right? We all know that politics could play. I play politics, he plays, they all play politics. Okay? If this is about Mark Lacourous, not about Kevin Powell, right? Because Kevin Powell's gone. It was about, it's about Mark Lacourous. And, and so, you know, I'll stipulate that Mark has made mistakes. I'm sure he's made, you know, plenty of mistakes through his 15 years of being city manager. You know, I'll also stipulate that even though he had the authority to make this arrangement with Mr. Powell, he would have probably been better served to have brought it before the board. And been more communicative with us, and let us know, hey, this is what I'm doing with this guy. You know, here's why I'm, here's why I've got him, I'm allowing him to work from home. We're using his license. He's working, you know, remote, all this, whatever the issues are, he could have been more communicative, and he wasn't. Okay? But the Kevin Powell situation's in the past, right? We don't have a time machine. We can't go back and undo it. I'm sure, you know, the city manager probably want to do some things different. Again, if he wanted to be more informative, he could have been. But, you know, I think that we have a new, we have a new department director who is embracing the change. He told me directly, he was more than happy to start working with you and to implement the ideas that you have. And I think that so that that department could be more effective, more efficient, and such. And I think that, again, this Kevin Powell thing is, this is not the form, regardless of what, regardless of what Commissioner Eisner says, we don't get involved in employee matters. It's not part of our job. And, you know, the, Mark, okay. We need to, you know, I don't know exactly what the agenda is, why this is just getting piled, and that that particular agenda had, you know, three other things that kind of all went kind of in sync with this, with the report. I told Billy Pulis, I thought he was getting weaponized, and I still to this day, and I don't think he did, that it's, he didn't do it. I think that it was a piling on. And, you know, we have agreed twice now to having a public workshop that includes community involvement to determine the smooth transition from the city manager Lacourous to a new management arrangement and a reasonable timetable for that change. You know, I say, we got to get to January. Let's, if this Kevin Powell thing is something, let it be dealt with in the proper channels within the city, within HR, however it's going to be handled. Let's get off of it. Let's move forward, get to January, make our decisions about Mr. Lacourous. You know, and the reason that I'm always put on this defensive, because you got, you give them no, you don't give them, you don't give them any credence on anything. It's just like, let's get them. You know, that's why I made that comment about the cops and kids. He's done a lot of wonderful things. Been here 45 years, took bullets, made cops and kids. It's not, I'm not his personal angel to have to constantly do this, but it's come down to that, because it's a constant attack. Okay, let's just, anything we can do to pile on, you know I'm right, and you can smirk at me all you want. Okay? So, it's, you know, it's, this has been a constant barrage on the man. He's retiring. We, you know, it's going to happen. We're going to meet in January. Let's just get to January. Let's get through the holiday season and deal with the critical issues we need to deal with, and keep rehashing anything that we can do to pile on the guy. Let's just get it over. It's happening. And for all the people that are excited to see Mark Lacourous go, he's going to go. Okay? It's just, we, there's two ways it can go. He can go out in a smooth, nice way with somebody who, you know, we give him a cake and a watch, or whatever you do when a city manager's served as long as he has, and it can be nice. Or he can go out, you know, with the pitchforks, and everybody's screaming, we got him, and all that kind of stuff. Again, let's move on. Kevin Powell thing is passed. We don't have a time machine. He's over. Let's move on. And let's implement the good stuff in his report. And I agree with Commissioner Koulias. We should approve, whether it's now or next, at the next meeting, we should approve three through eight, and let's move on. Thank you.
I'm going to ask City Manager Lacourous if he's got any comments before I come back to you. Go ahead.
So, there's so many things been said tonight, but I just want to stick with the basic facts of how this started. Again, as I say, in two attempts, in two written attempts, I asked for one and two to be separated. I could have done it a lot of different ways, and I had thought about a lot of different ways to do it. I've been around 45 years in policing and otherwise. I know labor law pretty good. I know due process pretty good. I know proper procedures very good. And it wasn't a four alarm fire, it was a 10 alarm fire of what I saw. Now, do I want to bring all those things out in a memo? No. Pull them together with the attorneys, because the attorneys are going to tell Mr. Pulis what was wrong with what he did and how we did it. Let's take the facts out of it. It's the way it was done from the very start, and the so many things of confidentiality, due process, labor laws, there are just so many of them. Please, pull it back. I asked twice. You saw the response I got at the meeting, and you saw the, some of the anger management issues that you see with him when he makes a presentation. That's all I tried to do, get the attorneys, and let's stop this, because I didn't want to detail, and I didn't want to go into all the things that was wrong to cause another lawsuit, us to be in court again, because I know they were there. This Kardashian's memos, you know, spills out what the problems was. The two attorneys agree that there were serious problems from the very start of this thing. That's all, we stipulated to three through eight or nine, let's get that going and stuff. The other stuff was already tainted from the very start about how it was done. It couldn't be taken back. It was in a draft of a public record, not only to me, but a department head. So, I did the action I thought best, and didn't want to, as you saw in one of the memos he read, I didn't want it to get a clash like this. But, you know, I don't think, I don't think he even listens to what the attorneys say now. So, that was the problem from the start. I'm disappointed with some things I've heard from some people on this board who also should know the basics of labor law and due process, but we're not going to go into that. We can, we can agree to disagree. This was a very problematic issue that I tried to bring the attention, not get to this. There are serious problems with it. We're ready to set three to eight. Dave Gilson has hit the road running on doing and implementing those things. It's affected staff. This meeting tonight's going to affect staff. I'm hoping that this thing can be, we can move on from this and move forward. And that is my hope after this meeting we can do.
Thank you. Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, Mayor. I need to clarify something my fellow commissioner just said in one of his comments. I never said that the commission should be involved with what the labor attorney, I specifically said, the labor attorney should be dealing with it, with the HR, and then coming back to us, because we're the overseer of the city manager. So, I never said that the commission should be dealing with this. You also made a comment that Mark has just picked on, but that's not the case. Mark is complimented when something is done well, and Mark is reprimanded or spoken to when something is done incorrectly. And there was a number of incorrectly things done. There was incorrect with the fire chief and the police chief's contract. There was issues with the attorney's contract. There were issues with this not being told. There was issues with us not being told that he was reading our emails because of Commissioner Carr, which had nothing to do with us. This goes back to the mayor's original comment about communication. This all could have been avoided for communication. You, Commissioner, you want to make this that we're just picking on him because we ran for this office to remove him? I have no issues. I don't want to remove Mark. I get along with Mark like two peas in a pod like that. But he also knows that if he does something that I don't like, I'm going to tell him. And that's what I'm here to do. I'm here to tell him, he should have spoken to the auditor and said, don't print this yet. He had enough time to stop him and to go ahead with the labor attorney and handle this properly, not at four o'clock to send us an email at the end. And that's where the fault comes in. You don't send this out in the last minute and ask us to do an audit by speaking to the HR department and all the other departments. That, what, and I don't want to say what you did was incorrect, but you did that. You went and did, which the mayor told you at the time, you handled the staff report. You went and did that investigation. I didn't go and do any investigation. I didn't speak to HR. I didn't speak to any of, any of the people. That's not our job to do. So, for me to be accused that I'm, that a commissioner's being involved, that's exactly what you did. You went and became involved and interviewed everybody. And when you interview everybody, what do you think they're going to say? They all report to Mark. So, you're not getting a truthful comment. What needed to be done was, as I said, it has to go to the labor attorney and our attorney, Ms. Kardashian. Let them work it out the way it's supposed to be done. Come up with the facts of what happened and what didn't happen, because now it's out in the open to some degree. So, that should be presented in honesty and open sunshine to the residents, and then we could decide what, whether there is to be any reprimanding to who we oversee.
Commissioner Koulias?
Thank you.
I didn't want to read this email, but it's come to the point where, you know, you've heard from commissioners, we didn't get any labor advice. We didn't get any legal counsel from our attorneys on suggestions to give back to the auditor on the findings. And so, I just have to read it, that way you can understand where some of us are coming from with this. This isn't just, this is a very important email. So... At this time, I'm also requesting that any further communication between Mr. Pulis and myself be limited to written communication. And this is from Attorney Kardashian to the board. Any legal advice that I am providing regarding the city auditor will solely be in writing moving forward, so there is no misunderstanding regarding what is being requested. Unfortunately, this would appear to differ from what the mayor has requested, but I feel it is necessary at this point. Additionally, there needs to be some clarification regarding what was discussed at Tuesday's meeting with Mr. Pulis, and what Attorney Jackson's expected involvement in this matter is moving forward. First, as advised in the memorandum to the commission, the role of the city's internal auditor is set forth in Section 14 of the city charter. This charter provision does not empower the auditor to conduct personnel investigations or act as an internal affairs investigator for the city. When during the course of an audit, information comes to the attention of the auditor, that constitutes malfeasance, misconduct, or violations of city policies that could result in disciplinary action. If well-founded, a formal complaint should be made to the city manager as the city's chief administrator in charge of personnel disciplinary matters per the city charter, with a copy of the human resources director and city attorney. If the complaint concerns one of the listed officials, the mayor or labor and employment council should be substituted. During our conversation, I indicated that the mayor should receive a copy, but that is not supported by the personnel manual. This is where the auditor's involvement in personnel investigations and disciplinary matters ends. The auditor should not be issuing any findings or conclusions regarding personnel matters in audit reports, which includes identifying specific employees or employee conduct. All investigations into personnel disciplinary matters, which includes violations of city policies, must be handled in accordance with the city's personnel manual. I have attached a copy I was provided for review. It contains policies and procedures for handling grievances, fraud, waste, ethics, violations, and employee discipline and termination. The auditor does not have a role in any of these processes, but is obligated to report allegations in the manner provided in this manual. Where the investigations are warranted, the auditor may be called upon to provide additional information or statements to the investigator if appropriate. A failure to follow these procedures would likely result in a finding that the city does not provide due process to the employee or official involved. Second, specifically with respect to the building department audit report, I am requesting that the report be revised to remove all the specific allegations of misconduct against the former building official. If they are recommended safeguards for the building department to employ to prevent future issues, those should be included. I am also requesting that his date of separation from the city be clearly identified in the report, and that he solely be identified as the quote-unquote "former building official", and report if there is a need to address his role in the department at all at this point. The focus of the report should be on improving the department and not attacking former employees. This is how the current draft comes across. A list of policies for the department to focus on moving forward should be included. The tone of the report should be factual and objective, not accusatory. I have requested that the report be revised in accordance with this advice. At this time, I am requesting that a revised report be provided to the city attorney and labor and employment council no less than one week before it is published in any city agenda. If the city auditor does not, if the city auditor chooses not to follow the advice of the city attorneys, including labor and employment council, then he will not be entitled to the representation provided by the city. If he or any other employee or official, for that matter, acts outside the course and scope of his duties as prescribed, as prescribed the city charter and city commission, then he could lose any sovereign immunity protections as a city official as well. Finally, Attorney Jackson's not issuing a report on this matter. She's preparing trainings for the city commission and department heads on labor and employment law. No formal grievances or complaints have been provided to the city and the manner provided by law for her to investigate or opine on. All she has been formally asked to do at this point is review the city auditor's report and provide an evaluation of the city's liability. and provide an evaluation of the city's liability, which she provided to the mayor and myself on Monday, October 2nd, morning during our video conference. An audit report should not contain grievance matters or allegations of misconduct against current or former city employees. Any such matters must be reported and handled in the manner provided in the city's personnel manual or in accordance with the, with the state law. If the city receives a formal complaint, it will be handled accordingly. Questions regarding the personnel manual and its application should be directed to Ms. Jackson. All attorneys retained by city provide representation and advice to the city officials and employees within the course and scope of their official duties as defined by law. And legal advice is deemed rendered to the city. This correspondence represents my legal advice to the city regarding the pending building audit report. This advice is rendered without consideration or acknowledgement of the veracity of the contents of the pending building department audit report and is solely directed to the proper procedures and scope of the audit. That was dated October 5th at 12:28 PM. And we, the mayor did respond back about 1:30 that same day. She goes, "Thank you, Ms. Kardashian. In my opinion, your email is untimely and not helpful given the circumstances. There was no certain, there was certainly no urgency to the information you provided. The commission voted on Tuesday to continue keeping the audit report tabled. Your information could have been provided to the commission in person with Mr. Pulis present, so it can provide clear direction. In any case, I fully recognize I asked for a courtesy and have no right beyond that. I am simply trying to get this matter before the commission for clear direction before something irrevocable happens." And so, like I've stated, we've gotten legal counsel and advice from two separate attorneys tied with this email about how to proceed forward and with the findings one and two. I believe this board should be able to, it is, there is nine findings, so I think this board should be able to accept findings three through nine. If we need to have, if the audit report can be cleaned up for findings one and two as recommended by our legal counsel to, to be edited to talk about certain parameters that was discussed in here, I don't think we need to include them at all. I think they need to be removed. And so I, I don't know how much longer we want to try to investigate this, but we got the legal counsel. They've given the legal advice. You can see in that email, it's, it's pretty stern and it's, you see the position we're in. And so we'd like for this to move forward and, you know, regarding the, we're six meetings away from having this discussion with, with Mark about retirement. And I promise you guys, we're going to pick a window and it's not going to be a long window. It's going to be a window where, you know, we're going to say, "Please consider retirement." And I don't know if the board's going to go for it, but I'm going to put it out there right now because I don't want this fighting to happen. We can't have this bickering issues come up and we'll talk about it here in another three months. But until then, I'd like to be able to focus on some issues, some capital improvement projects for the city, have some department heads understand what's going on instead of a, a, a quick decision made in one night. And that, that is my master plan. Now, if I'm up here and I'm the only person going for that and there's a four to one vote against it, then I'll have to live with it. Things change. Timing's everything. And so counsel is giving advice. We've talked about I'm willing to accept findings three through nine. And if findings one and two are not corrected or addressed as, as counsel had advised, I do not want them in the report. And I'd like to move forward with the audit, accept it and move past it. Thank you.
Commissioner Kuliannis, you have your light on.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so I just want to clear up something. Investigation by a board member is appropriate except for quasi judicial, which obviously you know this now. So I read the report, just so it's clear about this investigation of mine. Okay, I read the report. I went and approached the city manager and I said, "Hey, this is what the accusation's being made about the Kevin Powell situation. Am I missing something here?" And he gave me a timeline. Okay? And then I asked him, which is appropriate, I can't go around city hall talking to department heads without his approval. And I asked, "Can I, do you, I have your approval to speak to a couple of people? I'd like to speak to the HR director." And I think that was pretty much it. I don't, I don't remember who else I had to speak to about it, but I want to just verify these, this information. And I spoke to Ms. Neffen and she told me that, yeah, here's, these are the times, here's when he resigned, here's when he, the amount of time he was given, here's where it extended, here's where it extended, and here's where it extended. Okay? And that was, my investigation took, what, hour and a half? You know, I just asked the city manager, went down and talked to the person before, and then I thought, "It's only fair, if we're going to air this issue out in public," which I didn't think we should, I actually went, again, went to Mr. Pulis, said, "Hey, pull it back. Let's, let's, you know, talk about this thing with, with legal." But you've got to remember, it was already sitting on the agenda and the whole public had known about it. You know, there's a guy here that is kind of the, the forgotten person and the overlooked person, and it was this employee. And I just thought, again, let me just, it was a, this was a Paul Harvey moment, right? Let's talk about the rest of the story. I didn't, I never said that Mr. Pulis was, had given false information. I even told him, "I didn't think you gave false information. I thought a timeline would have been helpful." Okay? So that everyone would know exactly that it was not a situation of some guy working at home on for, because again, it didn't, it didn't say that in the report, how long he had been working at home. It could have been five years, it could have been five weeks. Again, the timeline was important. I'm happy I did that. I'm happy that I clarified some things. And, you know, it's unfortunate that I had to do that. I don't think that it was something I really wanted to do, but again, it needed to be done. But again, airing out this man's issues and the outrageous things that were said, we can be calm now, but let's remember what was said that night. You know, accusations that he pays people off. We can't be talking like that. We already have, you know, how many lawsuits we going to get into on, with this, these just wild statements that are made here on the board? We, we can't, we got to be somewhat controlled. Again, like I said, whatever comes on our head does not have to come out of our mouth. We need to control ourselves. We have to, we're, we're elected officials, and I know we have lots of power, you know? It's hard to get rid of an elected official. It's hard to change things. I understand that. But we can still have some control. And that was not a controlled moment, Commissioner Eisner, when you said that, okay? It was inappropriate. It was. It flat out was.
Point of order. What's the point of order, Commissioner?
I never said that. I said something, somebody said that to me, that, and it was put on Facebook. That was not my comment, so.
Commissioner Kuliannis, please proceed.
And again, my anger over the gaveling is, I thought that was a gaveling, a sufficient moment. Hey, we can't be-
Someday you'll be mayor, Commissioner Kuliannis, and you can gavel all you want, but until that day happens, I'm the mayor.
I got it.
I know, I hope you do get it.
I can still have my opinion. I can still have my opinion.
Yeah. Commissioner Eisner.
So some of the statements you've made that you, what was it? You did not give false information. But you did say that we needed his license, and that was not true, because the next in charge had a license, which was not said. Did Mr. Pulis, when you asked either Mr. Powell or our city manager to respond to, did you get any response contesting, changing, giving you any further information? Did you get any information that he was working remotely or did you have to find out all this information? Were you, you know, it, it's being portrayed that, that everybody was foregoing and giving you this information.
None, none of that information was in, is in his file. It was told me by staff and then Powell told me himself that, where he lived when we were just talking and-
I'm going to go out here on the, on the shelf, because that's my style, to ask, why was Commissioner Kuliannis given all this information from Kevin Powell and from our city manager? I don't know. One could assume, but you know, you've been defending only. I defend when he's right and I reprimand when he's wrong. So what you're saying up here is not 100% true. So we didn't, you also made a statement that, about the positives and negatives of funding, about how much we did not lose in money. There are things that I can't speak about, but there are, you, you know about it because you read the report also. That's, that's not 100% true either. So I, I don't know, you know, if you just want to say that you were right in everything. I listened to your report of what you spoke to Mr. Pulis, and I know what, I think you said that was positive, and I know there was a lot of accusations and that's why he had to go outside and prove his audit was legit. And had that not been said to him, I don't think he would have gone. But that's my personal opinion.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to end myself with making a couple of comments, and I do have a recommendation for a motion, and I think it's constructive. And so I think that, you know, the, the email that Commissioner Kuliya wrote, I mean, referred to from his Kardashian, that was October 5th. And he did read the email that I sent in response, but there was another email that I sent before that. And part of the problem, and this is, and I'd asked for there not to be any more communication in this more, on this matter, because I think the internal auditor was confused. He works for the commission, and I think people were offering him all kinds of advice in the sense that he wasn't sure whether he's being directed to do something, and there was an automatic guards up on that. So I just felt that, let's stop the communication until we get back before the commission to air this out. So I think Ms. Kardashian's email was an excellent email. I have no issue with it. That was the only reason that I, I said what I'd said. The I should also say again, I, I want to make sure we don't miss the point. The email to the new building director and the city manager was from Mr. Pulis was August 24th. There was a response on September 6th and 7th, and then we had the report aired publicly September 9th. Probably it was put on the agenda, maybe about the 15th or so or something like that before it went, we're, we're, went to the public itself. I think any time between that original August 4th and, there could have been a little stronger intervention to prevent from all of this that we've dealt with in a couple of, you know, a couple of hours over the past two meetings that we've dealt with this that could have been prevented. So what I would like to do is suggest a motion. There's three parts to this. I don't want to make it too complicated. They're simple. One is for the direction for both our personal attorney and general counsel to work with the internal auditor to bring forward the building department audit report that can be approved. That's number one. Number two, to come, for the two attorneys, Ms. Jackson and Ms. Kardashian, to come back with a recommendation of how to proceed with the rest of the information that was uncovered by the internal auditor, whether it should be an investigation. Also, I provided a memorandum that I'd like to have those items that I mentioned addressed. Again, my memorandum only went to Ms. Kardashian, to Ms. Jackson, our personal attorney, and I'm just waiting to hear back from them. But I'm still not going to promulgate anything until I do hear back from them. But number two would be to come back with a recommendation on how to proceed with the rest of the information that Mr. Pulis uncovered. That's number two. And number three was that, and, and this is something, first of all, I think we've got two excellent attorneys sitting here, Ms. Jackson and Ms. Kardashian. I don't say that in light, no matter what I say and things, it's trying to get to the bottom of issues, but they're both excellent attorneys. Nevertheless, as, as one of the issues I've had with the past, I, I think that there needs to be a little stronger interaction between our attorneys and what they see we do going up here to keep us out of trouble. That's part of their job is, in my opinion, is to protect this municipal corporation. By doing that, is to probably keep their ears close to what they hear going on and also when they see themselves being asked to get involved, to go ahead and, and to get involved. And, and I know they're both very busy. So the third recommendation of this, you know, motion would be to, if, if, if they see an email sent to them, such as the city manager sent to them, and, and they're busy and they can't get to something, then just to ask for more time and that we should defer this item until they actually take a look at it. And number two, if they feel that it should be tabled because somehow it jeopardizes the municipal corporation, I think that that should happen as well, which did happen, but it was only, it was a little too late then. So the three parts to this motion, the one I'm recommending is, one, to direct both attorneys to work with our internal auditor to bring forward what part of the report can be approved. Number two is to come back with a recommendation on how to proceed with the rest of the information that was uncovered by Mr. Pulis. And number three was to, for the attorneys, when they see something to, and, and they don't have time to respond, to ask for more time. And then if, if they do have time to, and they see something that may be jeopardizing the city to request that that item be tabled until they can actually look more thoroughly into it. Those are the three parts. And is there somebody that would like to make that motion or another motion? I'm just, we're at that point where we should be making a motion.
So moved. I would go ahead with that.
Okay. Is there a second from anyone?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion on that?
Some discussion. I don't think item three has anything to do with item one and item two.
Okay.
I think it should be made in a separate motion if it's going to be done that way. I think what we're here to discuss and what we've been listening to for the last hour was basically direction to our attorneys about how to handle this last night. And all I've heard so far is everybody go on and on about, about rediscussing and rehashing the whole thing that we went through the last time.
Okay.
And quite frankly, I'm, I'm to the point where we should have made a motion 25 minutes ago to say, "This is what we want our lawyers to do with this."
Okay. Commissioner Eisner, would you like to amend your motion?
Yes. So the motion is for number one and number two.
Okay. Commissioner Kuliannis, would you like to amend your second? All, all Vice Mayor Lund is saying it's okay with number one and two for the attorneys to work with the internal auditor to bring back a report that can be approved and the findings accepted. And then number two would be to provide us a recommendation on what, how the city should proceed or how the commission or how the attorney should proceed with the rest of the information that Mr. Pulis uncovered as part of his audit, which would be the, mostly I would suspect is going to be findings one and two.
I, I don't know. I, I need to ask Attorney Kardashian, is this appropriate? I need to ask Attorney Kardashian, is this appropriate
Well, one of the things that I would point out is essentially I have given direction through the email that was read. So I don't see where I'm going to be deviating from that advice that I provided. The second one, we can look at options that you have to deal with the information that was presented. The biggest issue that I, that just sitting here I see is that you're talking about now a former employee. He's no longer a current employee. So we don't have jurisdiction over that particular matter anymore with him being a former employee. I heard Commissioner Eisner say that he's not interested in moving forward and I'm assuming that the rest of the commission is the same way in terms of any potential causes of action. And I can't really, that we would have with respect to the former building official. And I don't see any right now. We could vet that more thoroughly in terms of information that has been presented and how to deal with that. Right now, who has jurisdiction over the former building official is the state of Florida.
I, if I may interrupt, I, my motion was not an issue of Mr. Powell. The issue is whether the personnel rules and policies were followed. And that's what I'm interested in. And, you know, it could be, you know, Joe Blow. That could be the one that did it. I don't care, but it's not Kevin Powell. And I'm not interested in pursuing a former. In my opinion, I think strongly, and I'll say this tonight, I've said it to Mrs. Kardashian, Mr. Powell should have been allowed to resign when he first asked to resign back in June of 2022. That's how I feel about it. I think we put the man in a situation that he probably didn't need to put himself into. And I think that as a result, this is what's happened. And I, my feeling is that I think we just need to kind of explore not just, you know, filling in the details of what Mr. Pulis found, but also why it happened. And that's got to do with the policies and procedures. And this may be an isolated incidence, but if we don't look into that, it's gonna be, it could potential happening in the future as well. That's what the second part of that motion was. That, I don't have an issue with any of the emails that any of the attorneys sent. I'm just trying to get us to where we can get past this and allow Mr. Pulis to get back to his audit work because he's at least a month behind right now. So that was the point of, one, for the city attorneys to work with Mr. Pulis to bring back a report that can be approved. And number two, to make a recommendation from a policies and rules perspective of one, why it happened and maybe some recommendations on what needs to be changed or in the rules to maybe prevent this from happening again, or some clarification or particular rule. If the city manager's got the authority to do this, fine. If the rules suggest maybe he doesn't and maybe he felt he did, then we need to know that too. And if it's something that the commission wants to allow to happen in the future, we can create a policy that clarifies that. That's all I'm getting at. I think we need to be constructive in how we're moving forward. It's, it's not about Mr. Powell. It's not about the city manager. And I do have my confidence in Mr. Pulis, but I think sometimes he needs, you know, and sometimes he can benefit from some of these work that the attorneys can do too. So he'll learn something from it as well as all of us. That was the point of those two items.
Mayor Matt, I'm gonna support option one. I think that gets to accepting the findings three through nine and then having Mr. Pulis either work with the two attorneys or take the advice that was given in the email for findings one and two and get presented back to us as soon as possible so we could accept it and move forward. Number two, in your motion, I'm concerned that we're sort of going back into looking into an investigation that maybe should have halted, you know? And so that's why I don't want to go back into, you know, what do we want to do with the results or findings from what was additionally found? And one recommendation is that we need to consider is, do department heads really have to live in the city? Charter officials, do, I mean, or department heads, charter officials, department directors? You know, maybe it's time to really have that considered. Maybe we're missing out on the cream of the crop, you know?
You don't see an issue with anything that Mr. Pulis found, whether it was in his ability to find it or not?
No, he has an issue with one.
I'm trying to go back to that email about us accepting and if we accept some of those findings, we're basically playing into, you know, a liability issue and isn't that what we're trying to stay away from? I mean, we accept the findings, we move forward.
Okay, I, I'm not gonna take issue. I mean, I do have an issue with, with basically, I think what you're suggesting. I may be reading you wrong, but just overlook everything that Mr. Pulis found as far as whether it was consistent with city policies or remote working and also the second job that took place as far as how we got there. If that's what the commission wants to do, fine. I don't agree with that as well and I hope the majority of the commissioners don't want to do that either.
Well, we've got some legal advice right now from two attorneys that say, hey, you know, we.
No, I don't think that's their advice. I don't think that's their advice at all. Their advice is the investigative portion is in their realm, not the internal auditors. I don't think they're saying, let's not look at this because it was presented in the wrong way. I think that anybody could go back and file a complaint or a grievance. And I think that the bottom line is, it says that if, if something is called to the city manager's attention, that's one thing. If it's called to the attorney's attention, that may be involving the city attorney, the city manager, that's a different thing. Those are the two scenarios that Mrs. Kardashian talked about. And then all I'm getting at is, you know, what about the rest of it? We're just gonna ignore it? That's all.
I don't think we're ignoring anything.
So basically, you're willing to support that motion. That is, the lights on again.
I wasn't, I mean, I'd like to finish talking honestly, Mayor. I mean, I'm not overlooking anything. I just don't see what, what the point is and having the auditor go back into this investigation that maybe shouldn't have happened and us making decisions and, you know, policy decisions from it.
Investigator, I mean, the internal auditor is not getting into it. It's the two attorneys that would come back with a recommendation on what they do with the rest of the stuff that Mr. Pulis uncovered.
That maybe shouldn't have been uncovered.
That's a problem. You have a problem with Mr. Pulis uncovering something?
No, Mayor, I'm just going by, I mean, there's some, first, you know, confusion from the attorneys right there.
Commissioner Eisner. You have a motion, do you want to amend it, change it or restate it?
I don't want to amend it at all. I just don't understand, do we have a second?
I don't know. Is there a second to restate your motion and then let's see if there's a second?
Well, my motion is still for number one and number two.
Right, for the two attorneys to, number one is for the two attorneys to work with the internal auditor to bring back a report that can be discussed and accepted, the findings accepted. And number two, for a recommendation from the attorneys on what to do with the rest of the information that Mr. Pulis uncovered. I also sent a memorandum in. I hope to get some feedback on that at some point.
I can't discuss it until we have a second, so. I can't discuss it until I have a second.
Well, that's the two, that's, you said you had a motion? I mean, is that?
I have the motion for one and two.
I just stated it.
Yes.
Okay, is there a second to that from any court? If not, it dies and. Okay.
I make a motion that we go with option one, have the internal auditor work with the labor attorney and our city attorney to accept findings three through nine and then have him work with both attorneys to help clean up or edit findings one and two to be accepted in the format and the scope of details in which he's supposed to be doing his audit.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I think that's a second for me. 500 times, basically, he's going for option number one. So yeah, a second.
Okay, there's no further, Commissioner Kulianis, you're right.
Discussion. Okay, so I'm so confused about the motions, but all right. I think we should approve three through eight or nine. I lost track of where it ends. That we should approve that. I think that we already know the circumstances of an employee working from home. We already know these matters. They've already been brought up, okay? They were already made public. We know what they are. I think that should be followed through whatever, if we were gonna make changes to policy, how would we make them? You know, however we would make them, whether we confer with the attorney, I don't necessarily think we need to go back to Mr. Pulis on it. I don't think Mr. Pulis needs to be involved at all. He brought it up, we got it. We know what, okay, we know some things happen that, that the city manager may have had authority to do, but we're not comfortable with it. Okay, so now we should do whatever it takes, however the normal policy, and you know this better than, I mean, you were city manager. You're much more versed on this than I am. Whatever the policy, the procedure, the process would be to implement things that then are directed to the city manager, hey, from now on, you can approve.
That's all I'm getting at.
And yeah, I just don't think it needs to be Mr. Pulis.
No, he wouldn't be involved. The information is there.
There and the attorney should digest it.
And then it would be up to the two attorneys to decide and make a recommendation to the commission on what to do with it.
I agree 100%.
And I would hope at minimum, we would get some policy or rule amendments, that's all.
I agree 100%.
All right.
I think that, I think it's three through eight is one's thing, which we approve.
All right, so.
And then a second would be to work, the attorneys work on going through these matters.
Agreed.
And agree.
Hold on to that thought. We have a motion and we have a second to only do the first part of what you're describing. So if there's no further comments, roll call on that.
What was the motion? I'm lost.
You would deny it if you don't want to do it and you can come back with a motion to do part one and number two.
Okay.
I mean, the way you describe it.
Gotcha.
It's option one only.
Right, your motion is option one. Roll call, please, Ms. Jacobs.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lund?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius.
Okay.
Now can I make a motion on the second part?
Okay, then for that, I'll say yes. Go ahead with your motion.
Okay, I make a motion.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, was yours a yes?
I said yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I make a motion.
Happening at the same time. Go ahead.
We direct our attorneys to, to analyze the issues that were in findings one and two and make recommendations on policy and procedures.
Yeah.
Do I have a second?
It, I would ask the two attorneys to include whatever my memorandum was to that effect. It includes some of that, but more policy and rule driven rather than personality. Yes, that's your motion. Is there a second to that one? I'll second it.
All right.
Open for comments.
Now, this is a recommendation for what's gonna be the updated findings one and two, right?
Restate your motion, Commissioner Kulianis.
The motion is that we give directive to our attorneys to examine what was in one and two and come back with policy procedure recommendations that they think are appropriate given the facts of one and two. For example, if they were to say, we don't believe the city manager shall allow a department head to work remotely. There's a policy and then we could approve that and then that would be something that he's now, you know, not capable of doing. Okay, whatever those are, I think he found things in one and two that I think, and I agree with the mayor, they shouldn't be ignored, but they should be worked on as a recommendation. I don't, I personally don't think the city manager did anything wrong, but that's just me. I think though, if he doesn't have clean directive, then this would be where the attorney, they're just gonna come back with recommendations and we can approve them or not. All we're doing is giving them directive to go and look into those items and I'm cool with that.
Okay. Vice Mayor Lund, I know you want to say something. I'd like to hear from Commissioner Eisner afterwards. Go ahead. Oh, did you?
I don't have any comment.
Oh, you've got the gavel. It's worse than the wand.
I asked if there's other.
Harry Potter's wand had less power than that thing. Commissioner Eisner, do you have any thoughts?
Thank you, Mayor. So I agree with the motion to move ahead with it, but I don't want to best decide the report that our auditor put in. And I also do not wish to, I wish to have the attorneys handle it so that it can be presented to the residents. I do not want to have something hidden. I don't want to proceed with any sort of further lawsuits or, you know, that. I'm not interested in that. What I'm interested in is being honest, upfront and letting the people know I don't want to be hiding something at all.
Ms. Kardashian, I'm gonna let you address that. Ms. Jackson, either one of you, I think basically you're saying, I think the process covers that, but I'd like for y'all to explain it. This, did you hear Commissioner Eisner's?
Right, so I think, I think Ms. Jackson, if you wanted clarification, you look like you wanted to ask a question on the expectations here. From my point of view, what I'm hearing from the commission is that you really want to find that path forward in terms of the policies and procedures you have implemented. You know, one thing I want to make clear is that nobody at any time has ever said to ignore the issues that were raised, right? That, I think, that I think is clear, right? But what we need to find is that clear path forward and the policies that need to be in place to prevent.
The confusion.
To prevent the confusion and also to ensure that the city receives honest services from all of its charter and public officials. That really is the goal here and what we want to look forward to in the future. And in that regard, it may be recommended policy and personnel manual changes. It may be recommended changes with respect to your ordinances and charter and how you have that laid out and the interplay with that and your personnel manual. That could help bring clarity to this in the future.
And then to Commissioner Eisner's point that this information would be a public record at some point.
Yes.
Well, yes.
At some point, I know if this is.
With the proper protocol.
Right, if this is deemed an investigation, there's a protocol for that. And at the end, go ahead, Ms. Jackson.
No, I just was wanting to seek clarification because I wasn't understanding exactly what our rule was.
If it's deemed confidential because of the nature of the work, then it will be done so. And at the end of that work, whether it's deemed to be investigation and those findings are reported, then everything becomes public to address Commissioner Eisner's concerns. Is that, is that pretty much accurate, the way I've just described it?
Yes, and the only clarification point that I want to make sure is clear is that it's when, you know, there has been a complaint that is presented in the manner that's required by the personnel manual is when it's entitled to those protections.
Right, got it.
Right.
Does that help, Commissioner Eisner?
It does, but then we would have to bring, make sure that the city manager follows through on that.
That's what policy is set for.
I think Ms. Kardashian, her protocol, I think addresses that. I'm calling it a protocol because.
I'm just clarifying all the things that I need to go ahead with that. And however that gets done, I'm fine.
Is that clear to, I mean, is there an issue with that?
I understand. I understand, I do as well.
Okay. If there's no further comments, roll call. Commissioner Vice Mayor Lunt, go ahead.
No further comments, roll call. You can't back soon, trust me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Roll call.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes. My gavel back.
Miss gavel back.
He misses it.
All right. Item 10, which is the last item, is the settlement of code enforcement lien 44098 US Highway 19 North, McClellan's property. Ms. Kardashian, I'm going to ask, go ahead.
Need a two-minute break.
You want to take a break? Okay, let's recess till 10:40.
I didn't want to interrupt you.
Thank you. No, I understand. And 10, we have an addendum as well. One more item after this one. Settlement of code enforcement lien 44089, 44098 US Highway 19, McClellan's property. Ms. Kardashian, I'm going to turn it over to you because I think we left it off with you at the end of the last item.
Yes, this was the item where you had received the settlement. You know, the settlement offer still stands. I believe that the police chief has provided you with additional code enforcement background because this case had been pending, I believe, since 2018. There was about a year when the lien was running. I have reviewed the notices and the code enforcement notices were all proper. There's no legal requirement with respect to further information. That's to be provided. I know that there were notices that went out at the beginning of this year which prompted them to make the offer because there was no knowledge that the lien was running. I don't know what additional questions you may have for myself or the police chief on this, but we'd be happy to answer them for you.
Thank you. Chief, you got anything you want to add?
No, I think that the offer for settlement was sufficient with staff recommendation too for, with the attorney's approval.
Let me ask the public whether you have any comments, public comments. Mr. Chump, are there any remote access comments?
And there are no raised hands at this time.
Okay, Commissioner comments. The offer is $5,500, Ms. Kardashian?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and the fine was, I think, $28,000 or $35,000?
I believe it was 38.
Okay. Commissioner comments. Vice Mayor Lunt, do you have anything?
Yeah, I have one question. So we apparently mowed their lot on 12/4 of 2019, of December 4th of 2019. It shows in the record as, and that $2,000 charge shows as being paid in our books?
I do not have the answer for that one.
Well, Vice Mayor. That's the information I got from you, Jeff, so.
Not about the mowing? Oh, in the file.
It was in the file.
Yes.
It's marked as 12/4/19 and is paid.
If it's reflected in the file that I've given you, that's what came from the code enforcement file. So it would have been paid, correct.
For information for the rest of the commission, on December 4th of 2019, we actually mowed that particular piece of property, which brought it back into compliance. So December 4th, 2019, was when that lot was brought back into compliance, to my knowledge anyway, from looking at the records. There was also an administration fee of $350 that was paid on that date as well. According to the records that I've viewed. So my, my approach to this was we established a fine of $50 a day in March 11th of 2019. The property came back into compliance on December 4th of 2019. That's a total of 268 days at $50. I think the fine should stand at $13,400. And that's my particular opinion.
Commissioner Eisner, your light's on.
Yeah, originally when I, originally when I saw this, I wanted to go to the full amount. Of course, there is extenuating circumstances with this. I had further information from the chief. I don't know how you own a property and don't take into consideration when you have a violation against you. That's just, maybe it's just me, but I mean, if it was mine, I would be involved or I would be, you know, making sure that it got taken care of. So, but I guess there are people that do that. So my big concern is that in the reading, there is a certified mail here on January 9th, 2022. But in some of the information, it shows just regular mail. Did we send, this is a tough question. Did we send registered mail for each and every time? Or did we send it through the United States Postal Service? Because my concern is we should always be sending any violation or information that we need to have verification that they got it. Because, and this should be in everything and it should go into the price of what we go to retrieve. There never should be something sent to anybody that's not signed receipt requested.
You are absolutely correct that for code enforcement, the notice of violation, the notice of hearing, all of it is required both by your ordinance and by state law to be sent via certified mail return receipt requested. That's how it has to be delivered. And that is actually part of the findings that your code enforcement board is supposed to make when they enter their orders. So one of the things that's the basis of their order is they're saying that they find that the city complied with all the requirements. So as a matter of law, you have to rely on that unless they challenge that in the manner that's provided by law, which is the appeal process that goes to the circuit court, where they can say, I was not provided by due process because I did not receive the notice that was required by law. So you have the code enforcement order that substantiates a finding that they did receive proper notice of that. So we rely on that to say that they received the proper notice. And then there was also no challenge of that after the fact, when they had the ability to challenge any due process or notice that was provided to them.
So then I go back to, originally, I remember the vice mayor making a total $35,638.99 request in full. I think I made a quote of $28,800 of just the fine amount. I'm willing to meet the vice mayor because I think he did a decent amount. Because I think there's fault, more fault on the violation side than, than on our side, even though there's, I see problems with both. So I would go along if he's going to bring that after we discuss it. That would be a fair amount. It's not the $5,500 and it's not the $35,000. So, because I do think that, and that's what I wanted to find out from you, if there was return receipt requested. Because they can't sit there and just say, well, we didn't receive it if you signed for it. So you did know about it, you didn't act on it, and that's not our fault. We're not the babysitter. So that's what I have to say.
Commissioner, thank you. Commissioner Kulias?
I'm just going to stick with the staff recommendation of the $5,500. I think staff and all parts of staff have shown and provide backup that, you know, property owners try to comply. We understand the issue of, you know, encampments and on people's properties and the difficulty of that, even including our city. And so I'm going to go with the $5,500 as suggested by staff. And that's what I'm going to support. Thank you.
Commissioner Kulianis?
I would go along with either. I actually like the vice mayor's calculation. I think it makes sense to go up till the day of compliance and charge the, whatever the normal rate would be, the $50 a day. I think that seems like a sound way, but if the board wants to go with the $5,500, I'm fine with that as well.
Okay, do we have a specific?
I actually like the vice mayor's.
Okay, do we have a specific amount again, Vice Mayor Lunt?
It was $13,400.
Okay, is there a motion to, Ms. Kardashian would be to move to settle for $14,500?
$13,400.
$13,400, okay.
Yes.
That would be, I'm looking for, we haven't gone to public comments yet, or have we?
I don't think so.
Okay, public comments, are there any public comments on this item? Mr. Chump, is there any public comments on this item?
And there are no raised hands at this time.
Okay, back to the commission. If there's a motion, if you could state your motion, see if we can get a second.
I don't know, motion to move the fine to $13,400 for. I'm looking for this.
I think just the amount is what we're looking for.
All right. Settlement of item 10. Oh, yeah, sorry.
Settlement of code.
Something official. Motion to move for $13,400 charge for settlement of code enforcement lien on 44098 US Highway 19 North. Second.
Second. If there's no further comments, roll call.
I do have a comment I wanted to make. I don't know where I heard this. I think it might have been from Ms. Kardashian that moving forward, that she would be looking through our code enforcement, all of our fees are, so that we shouldn't have to be up here making these decisions nonstop. It should be a set amount. And I thank you, I know that's just another task you're doing for us, which I praise you for. But it should be not our job to do. It should be a set amount unless there's really extenuating circumstances of hardship that we have to deal with. But we shouldn't be dealing with these on a day-to-day basis. That's it.
Okay, any other comments, if not, roll call.
Just for clarification, originally there was a day.
Yes, within, for payment of the settlement, within a time certain. Whether that's 30 days or 60 days or 90 days. But I would like a date certain.
Motion to amend the motion to, to pick a 60-day time certain.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulias?
No.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes. All right, we have an addendum item and this is for the city attorney to request a shade meeting to discuss litigation. Ms. Kardashian?
Yes, this was another settlement offer that was received by Attorney Salzman and a request for you to hold a shade meeting on that revised settlement proposal. So we're back again. I would just be looking for a motion for you guys to approve.
No, no date or amount of time for the meeting?
We have a date.
Do you have the date?
Well, my suggestion is November 1st. We had two dates from the attorney. The second is the last beach concert, so I didn't hear any objections. It's just the time, I believe there's a ribbon cutting at 5, but it would be 5:45 or 6. I think it's the one thing, 5:45 is the time. On November 1st was.
Do we have to state?
Yes, the time, I believe, has been standard in the memo of 60 minutes. You don't have to use the whole 60 minutes, but you just couldn't exceed it. Last time you had approved two hours for the meeting. So however you feel is appropriate, if you want only an hour to do it or.
Yeah, he put two hours in here.
Yeah, so based on the previous one.
There's a ribbon cutting at 5.
Yeah.
That's why I asked about 5:45.
There's a ribbon cutting at 5.
I know, but I usually get back here by, I mean, 5:30. Basically, if we have a time constraint like the last one, I'll tell Ms. Hungenville or Ms. Lemmons, who's ever in charge of it. to see if we can get this done by 5:30. And then it's, getting the meeting started is not a significant issue of preparing. It's just a one agenda meeting, so it's no big deal. I think 5:45, if you want to make it 6, that's fine too, I don't care. I mean.
I'm happy with 6, it gives you a little bit of time.
6 is fine, okay.
So, we're talking one hour or two hours now?
It says 2 in the request.
It would be, request, motion to authorize a shade meeting at November 1st at 6:00 PM for an approximate duration of two hours.
So moved, second.
Okay, if there's no further comments, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuliash?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuliash?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lon?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiottis?
Yes, okay, that ends the agenda. Let me go to board and staff comments. Chief Young?
No comments, sir.
Okay, Ms. Kardashian?
Nothing, sir.
City man, please. Mr. Jenkins?
No comments, thank you.
Vice Mayor Lon?
I have no comments, thank you.
Hey, Commissioner Eisner?
Yeah, I'll be very quick. This has been a very tough week for me, I'll be honest to let you know that. I've watched the horrors of humanity, and I just hope that things can only go better. That's pretty much all I want to say. And I just pray that less hardship and more peace in this world. Thank you.
Amen. Commissioner Kuliash?
Yes, I just wanted to state, for the upcoming meeting tomorrow, I will be at the ribbon cutting, but I will not be attending the workshop or the commuting engagement with the, for the SpongeDox vision plan. And so, I just wanted to give a heads up for that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kuliash?
So, in commenting on Commissioner Eisner's prayer and statements, you know, I grew up, I didn't grow up in Tarpon Springs. I was born in Gary, Indiana. And we lived in the Steel Mill town. And when my father could afford, he moved us out to the suburbs to have a better life. And in the suburbs, it was a predominantly Jewish community. And I grew up with most of my friends being Jewish. My best friend was Gary Weiss. And we, he went on and I went on to go to Indiana University as a freshman in college. And I didn't want to separate from my friends because all my friends were Jewish. And I joined a Jewish fraternity. I was the sole Gentile in a Jewish fraternity. And so, when, you know, there's some anti-Semitic imagery presented here at the commission meetings, it bothers me because I know the people, right? And we have a big kinship with Jewish people, as Greeks and Orthodox. We have, you know, if you go to the synagogue, and, you know, I attended more bar mitzvahs and barz mitzvahs than probably any Gentile has, you see the similarities between, I know, I got it, I got it, in two minutes. The, you'll see the similarities between Orthodoxy and Judaism. You know, the priests with their tassels, and our priests wear them because Christ was a Jew. And it was a continuation of Judaism. That's one of the reasons that we, as Orthodox Christians, celebrate our Easter at a different time than those in the East, right, and the West. We celebrate differently than them. And the reason we do is because Easter is on the first Sunday following the full equinox. That's what Catholics and Protestants observe. But we, as Orthodox, it's only after the Jews have celebrated Passover because Christ was a Jew. It is true, yeah. So, it's, and we follow, so we have a kinship. What's going on in Israel obviously isn't as close to me as it would be Commissioner Eisner, but it's a little closer than most people have, and that's my comment.
Okay, well, may I ask for a motion to extend the meeting five minutes? No, no, I have something I need to say. Is there a motion? Five minutes, 11:05, thank you, roll call, please, thank you.
Commissioner Kuliash?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuliash?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lon?
Commissioner Kuliash, do you have any final thoughts? That's okay. Mine are not gonna take five minutes. One, next week, we'll be getting, according to plan, the special counsel report sometime. And that'll be next week. And that will be a public document at that time. I know the clerks are gonna get it. Ms. Kardashian, I think both attorneys, I believe Mr. Salzman may be somewhere unavailable for a while. And so, that's gonna be out. The second thing, and I forgot, on the second part of our motion for the building department audit, where the attorneys are gonna be doing some work, if you could also, if you could get with Ms. Jackson and kind of come up with a timeframe of when that, the results would be ready for that. So, at least there's some expectation of when we should be seeing that, and it's not an open-ended, because I know there's gonna be questions that are gonna start getting asked. That was the only thing.
Mayor?
Yes.
I did have a conversation with her, and she said it would take, give or take, about a week.
A week?
Yes.
Okay, that's great, if that can be done.
Yeah, I would imagine we can probably get you something by your next meeting. Your next formal commission meeting.
Okay, the next formal commission meeting, okay, that'd be great. Thank you very much. If there's nothing else, meeting adjourned at 11:01.